Okay. I'd like to call the meeting, the closed session, the study session of the March 13th, 2018 City of Newport Beach meeting to order, please. Madam Roelke, Madam Clerk, Roelke, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, clarification items on the consent calendar. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Mr. Avery? Mr. Piattar? Mrs. Dixon?
None.
Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Muldoon? Mayor Protem O'Neil?
None.
And I don't have any. Okay, we're moving on to the best event of the whole night, which sadly wasn't presented to me, so I'm giving Mayor Protem the honor of doing this wonderful presentation.
So, Mr. Mayor, I've found out that the girls from the water polo team will be trickling in just a little bit, so if it's okay with you, maybe we'd wait for some of them to get in and then we could cut into the CIP presentation to do that, if that's okay.
You bet.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll move right along to the main event, which is the early look at the proposed capital improvement program.
And just briefly, I know that some of the council members have conflicts related to some of the items in the presentation, and so I think the best way to handle this is to have the council members announce their conflicts now and then get up and leave when we get to that particular item in the presentation, if that's okay with you, Mayor Duffield.
Absolutely.
So maybe we can go through the council members and see if they have any conflicts to announce, maybe starting with Councilmember Hurdman.
Yes, I do. Under facilities, I have a conflict with Babo Island Sound Monitoring Station under streets and drainage, a conflict with Marine Avenue Reconstruction, Babo Island Drainage Master Plan, and Marine Avenue Drainage System Improvements. And then finally, underwater, I have a conflict with Babo Island Water Main Replacement Phase Two of Three.
And I believe those are all based on your real property interests.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I have a conflict on study session number three for streets and drainage, specifically annual concrete replacement program for real property interest reasons, and annual neighborhood street slurry seal for real property interest. And under miscellaneous, I have a couple here all relating to business interests in wireless telecommunications, including Babo Village enhanced maintenance, if that's correct, SCE Rule 28 credit purchase, UUD Assessment District 111, 116, 116B, and 117.
And Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you. Yes, I have one item under study session item three related to water, Bay Channel Main crossings replacement, real property interest. Thank you.
And finally, Mayor Duffield?
I have a conflict under the harbor port plan. I have a business interest in that and an Eelgrass survey harbor-wide and the RGP 54 permit for a business interest.
Okay, I think that's all the conflicts. And once again, just for the public's, just for background, the council members will get up and leave when the specific item comes up. All right, so I think we're ready, Dave.
Well, then, good evening, Mayor, council members, and we're excited to bring the early look for the 2018-19 capital improvement program. Just some thoughts before we get started. Remember, this is an early look, and this has started, this is a living document, our capital improvement program, but we start early on this and actually prior to your goal setting. So everything in here you're going to see tonight, some of it's fixed from last year and other things that we're looking for your input on. We've, we spent considerable amount of time, starting back December basically, looking at our master plans, working with the various departments, our line departments, and gaining their input, working with the community, various organizations, and things that you've told us too. So we've tried to incorporate it along with your goals to come up with a plan that we think we move forward to a final draft. So tonight, I'm going to start with a little bit. First of all, before I get started, I do want to thank staff, particularly Jamie Copeland's here with us, she's our financial administrative manager, and her administrative staff really do a lot of time on this, Mark Vakoyevich, Chris Miller, and all the various line departments we've met with, and they've been participating in this, along with Dan Monteschevitz's group that spends a lot of time getting the numbers together. It's a considerable amount of effort to get to here, so thank you all for that. So looking at how we go forward, council usually gets us general direction and goals, and you remember some of the discussions from our early look and other discussions. And the focus on our CIP again this year will be mainly focusing on maintaining our existing infrastructure in good working condition. In addition to that, we're investing another $5 million to general fund towards our infrastructure and the maintenance repair areas. And then we're going to try to put another $1 million from our Neighborhood Enhancement Fund into the next phase, the second phase of the West Coast Highway Landscaping Rehabilitation Project. Another area we've been focusing on is increased investment in our harbor. So we have projects in here that relate to seawalls and storm drained, go into drainage, I'm sorry, dredging, enhancements for our harbor users and our mooring permits. And then finally, we've also, along with, you'll see projects throughout the city in various areas, but we also have some additional emphasis in some of our areas, Babo Peninsula, Babo Island, Babo Village, and Coron del Mar. So this first group of projects I'm going to, and maybe as I, another guideline, I'll go ahead and go through segment by segment, and I'll stop if it's okay with you, Mayor, and we'll take any questions at that time, and then we can go to the next one. This first group of projects are currently in our 1718 CIP, and what you're seeing here is projects that are in various stages. Some are being designed, some are under construction, some haven't started yet, and these may or will carry over with the fiscal year, and we're not anticipating any changes to these. So I wanted to list this page and the next page, and take a moment, respecting any conflicts you have, if you had any questions on current projects, just before we get started on future. Okay, so let's move on to what we're thinking for the future. Our first category we are taking on is facilities. So, and I'll probably just go through the items and describe them to you, and my dyslexia will probably confuse me on the numbers, so I'll try to avoid all the number stocks, but you can see it on the screen here. You'll notice a couple of things on these slides. We have the identified programmer project, and then the finance on that is colored. It's either green, and the green is a completely new project or program going into the CIP proposed this year. And if it's black funding tax, that is a current project being rebudgeted, but we're adding money to it and making some adjustments to it. Against the funding, you'll see a column with some initials, and those initials are the various funds that the project is coming from. And on the bottom of the screen, you'll see the various funding acronyms spelled out there for you, in case you're concerned where the funding is. You'll see, for instance, forfeit forfeiture fund, you've got the facility maintenance management plan, general fund, environmental liability, et cetera. So on our first project there is our capital, major capital facilities maintenance, and we try to do about 1.5 million into this program every year. This year, we had some restrictions on funding, so we're going to do about $1 million of regular program, and we're supplementing with part of the $5 million, $275,000 in general fund to make up a basket of major projects we're doing. Those type of projects coming up that our list shows, we're going to be replacing the chillers in the main library, we're going to be doing lighting and switching upgrades in the main library, we're going to be addressing some of our restrooms like at Newport Pier, and also one of our parks. Various major capital programs make up that number. And I could almost give you specifics later on, if you'd like on that. Second project there is our police station remodel. As you recall, last year we did, or this fiscal year, we did the deputies quarters and some offices. We need to do some work in their bathroom, shower areas, and lockers, so we have some money in that budget. This is a project that we're rebudgeting and we're adding money to it. You'll see the amounts down below for a total of $850,000. And then we need to address our police facility shooting range. It's in need of rehabilitation, so we're going to be putting $500,000 in there from our environmental liability fund. We're going to be fully funding the Lido Fire Station as you just recently purchased the property. You'll see there's a $9.5 million total in this. This now gives the money for construction next year. The design is underway currently, and we look to award this next year. And then another little fire station work, we're working on the Santa Barbara Station. We're doing some internal work on some of the lockers and things for the screws there. So there's $31,000 being added to the existing budget on that. The next project down is a proposed project. This is the Central Library Lecture Hall, and this is coming out of the library board and a group that wants to afford this project. So there's a proposed city money in here and also some contribution funds in here.
So maybe, I don't know how you would like to handle it, Mayor Duffield, maybe you have a discussion of all those items. If anyone wants to talk about the facility items before Councilman Hurdman leaves, or have him leave and then talk about Babo Island Sound Monitoring Station, do you have a preference?
Oh.
Maybe we'll have questions about, you want to, does anyone else have a preference?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
A discussion on the first, all the blue items up there on, and then he can step out for the last item? Okay, so any?
So we'll pause here, and if we'll take any questions from the council or a discussion you'd like to have.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of questions. One of them, on the fire station two replacement, occurs to me as I'm looking at the funding source, that one of the things that we had discussed from a funding standpoint was two sources of revenue. One of them would be to rent, or to allow for parking at the current, at the site for the, where the McDonald's is now this summer, and then the second would be ultimately the sale of the existing site for the, for the fire station. When those two revenue, revenue sources come in, are we putting those back into the facilities financing, the FFP fund is essentially a replenishment?
I think that's something I would recommend, but ultimately, the council would decide what, where those funds would go.
Okay. And then on the lecture hall, what's the $70,000 going toward? What's the, what's the proposal there?
This would be the development of a concept that could then be used for fundraising, or if you determine if you want to go forward with the project. The funding hasn't been worked out yet. Again, this funding, we're proposing $50,000 from the FFP, and we're looking for a contribution from the group of $20,000.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions, just going down the list. Thank you, Dave. I know this represents a lot of work, past, present, and future. You mentioned in your introductory comments, major capital facilities maintenance, that amount, there were restrictions or reductions? Anything that we need to know about, or you're cutting back?
Yeah, I'm sorry, did you do it, Dave, or?
Sure. Remember, we look at, what you haven't seen yet is that we look at the planned CIP in the context of the overall budget. So if I need to take a little bit of money from that, from our usual allocation, and fund other things that you won't have seen yet, they're more in terms of operations, or, for instance, our pension pay down. That's why sometimes I tell Dave, you only have 1.275 instead of 1.5.
Well, that's good fiscal control, so thank you.
You'll see that, though, the rest of the puzzle as it comes forward.
Well, so I'm glad I asked that question, so we're nipping at the edges, I see that. Could you do, as we go forward, or maybe the police station remodeling project will be completed after this period, but we're dealing with these things in chunks. I, for one, would like to see, since we're not building a new police headquarters, or is this police station or police headquarters?
This is a current police station, or their headquarters now.
Okay. I, I think it's fine, what you're doing, I just would like to see it in the context of an overall remodel, upgrade, furniture, flooring, roofing, what we've been doing, to look at it in the context of a, just improvement of the building, and because it's important what you're doing, and that we're avoiding the building of a new police headquarters, and by investing in these maintenance and repairs and improvements. So just to see the total, the total project over time is fine, and you break it up over these budget years is perfectly fine, I just want to see the holistic program. And I was going to comment, as the Mayor Protem did, on the sources of funds for the Lido Fire Station, so thank you for that. And on the Central Library, we'll be seeing a proposal on that in public discussion, I presume, correct?
We would bring that forward and show you the concept, yes.
Okay, and then, an item that is not on our facilities list, I would like to add, and I know we'll be talking about it further, but a junior lifeguard headquarters, so we could discuss that during public comment and when the council discusses these items, but I want to add a line item for that. And actually, I'm talking specifically Phase One, which would be similar to what you're talking about with the Central Library Lecture Hall, conceptual drawings, preliminary design work, scoping out related to location, coastal commission work, that type of staff time. Phase One, if you could add that. All right, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Piattar?
Thanks. A lot of my questions were covered. The major capital facilities maintenance fund, 1.275, is that the slush fund you're talking about?
It's not a slush fund. Actually, Dave and, respectfully, Dave and Mark really do have a robust plan. This is for, this is for, for major things, like roofs and AC and chillers and things like that, new lighting, where the departments individually have small amounts to cover smaller things. But yes, it is technically, it comes basically from the general fund, so, but we did a couple of years ago decide we wanted to hold on to and repair the buildings that we have, make sure we weren't scrambling every year to identify these funds, so we set aside an amount every year just.
So is there a list on priorities as far as what needs attention and what doesn't, and what's going to be competing for these funds?
I'll let Dave and Mark answer that.
Actually, there is, and Mark can go in detail, but we did a study several years ago, and we surveyed all our buildings, and to die on your earlier question, I apologize, sometimes it looks a little randed, but there is a method to the madness. For instance, we re-carpeted the police station several years ago. The plan shows that carpet has to be done in certain buildings every certain years on a major level, so the police station got some carpet, some other buildings got some carpet, and we do that as one bid to get the best price. A few years ago, we did electrical panels, several of our buildings had really outdated electrical work, so we packaged that up. We tried to do HVAC systems together. This year, we're doing a lot of painting, the utilities yard and several of the buildings and libraries are being painted. In fact, one of the items too will be carpet coming up, we're doing the Mariners Library and things like that. So there is a method to it, and sometimes we hit buildings differently. Be, just keeping up big, large facilities has a lot of ongoing wear and tear and maintenance. So we could probably produce the plan, it'd probably be better if you'd like to see the maintenance plan, it's a living document too, we could go into depth, and you could kind of see the method to how this happens.
If we're going to be able to see that at a later meeting, or if it's, can be made available to us, that would be great.
Okay.
You know, tonight, we're approving furniture for the police station. We replaced carpeting two years ago, but they had to remove all the carpet, they had to remove all the existing furniture, put the carpeting in. It would have been nice to coordinate those two items. And I think what, I think what we need to talk about, like what Ms. Dixon was referring to as the master plan for the police station, even though you're doing bits and pieces as it relates to all of our facilities, it'd be nice to know what is the total picture look like, especially on a major facility like that. And then, the Lido Fire Station, we've got the budget of 6.8, we're adding another 2.6. Is the land cost in these numbers?
No, it's not.
So the land cost is not part of this, but we did have a change from the rehabbing of the existing site to now a new site between last year's budget and this year's budget. So, and, and we no longer need the temporary fire station. So the budget still went up pretty significantly. Why is that?
And I'd have to look at the FFP, but I believe that's the number. This is a larger station, so it's going to be a little more than, for instance, we just awarded the Coron del Mar Station. I don't know, Mark, if you have that number, or I can give you the FFP. We can look at that and show you that, where that budget comes from.
I mean, we were 6.8, and that included a temporary facility which we no longer need. I don't know, maybe the temp, station funds went into the purchase price of the property and didn't go or stay in this line item.
Well, the, the purchase of the, of the land has already been bought and paid for, so in terms of continuing the budget forward, that's already in basically this year's book, so it's not being shown forward.
So it was part of this line item, it's just that it's not being carried forward because it's now expended.
Well, actually, what it was is, remember, we did a mid-year budget adjustment, so it was never in, in our review of the CIP last year. It came to City Council earlier this year, and they approved, proved that as its own separate purchase, as a budget amendment, so it never really kind of goes into this document. It was, it was approved as that, as that $4 million purchase.
So I would have expected this number to come down, or at least not significantly go up, because we're saving a million, million and a half for our temporary facility, but the new site we're purchasing is a little bit bigger, so there'll be a little bit more site costs associated with it. But yet, it's gone up considerably, you know, it's gone up 30%.
Mark, did you update it with the current numbers from the CDM station?
Yes, yeah.
Per square foot. Remember, Mr. Piattar, too, these, as you know, these are just estimates. This is the, the plug number we put into the CIP, and then the actual cost, of course, is the bid cost. So, but when Mark looked at the CDM Fire Station and priced that out per square foot, this is the price that is recommended to be held for the CIP. Do we hope it'll go down? Yes.
You're still adding 30%, even after a million and a half costing is on a temporary facility?
Well, also, as, as things come into, closer into view, we're able to better estimate those costs, that oftentimes, the number in the FFP is, is a, is a wild guess, not a wild guess.
Okay, so you're attributing it all to what you anticipate the cost to be, not so much that the scope expanded?
That's my understanding.
That's correct, yeah.
And, remember, this is the, one of the two stations that has the fire trucks with the, with the ladder, as well as having more personnel at this station. Remember, this is a station that has five personnel.
Yeah, I was just looking at the FFP, and the, for instance, the CDM Library and Fire Station's about 10,000 square feet, and this one's slated to be 11.5 just for the fire, because it's got a lot more apparatus and employees in it. So there will be some cost, but, but to your point, we will look at that cost and see if it's correct, and make the adjustment as we get towards the draft for you.
Okay, you know, it's just, I'm just flagging big pictures. The $70,000 for the Central Library Lecture Hall, at this point, what we're doing is, we're just doing some schematic design, very loose, very early, showing where it would go, kind of what it would look like, and able to raise money, figuring out some preliminary costs. $70,000 is a lot. I think you're going to be coming back with a contract for us, and, and like typical design for an architect, you're going to do it more or less on an hourly, so hopefully it won't exceed that, and hopefully we keep it to about half of what this is. You know, I presume they have a fair idea of what they're looking for, or are we just, are we going to be coming up with dozens of alternatives? $70,000 seems high if all you're doing is coming up with a early schematic design.
It may be, our goal wouldn't be to use all that, that was, the $50,000 was a budget number the city thought we'd contribute against their 20, and your guidance would help if you want to use all their 20 first, then our 50, but we, if we can do it for 30, that'd be great. There probably will be a couple concepts that have to be developed based on where we can fit it in the library, but again, we'll try to keep that as low as possible.
Okay, that's the only thing I wanted to point out.
And I think it's probably a good point, because the, the number is there, some of these are estimate, it, it, it's not our intention to use all the money in every project. We really always try to be efficient about it, and, and try to get to the point, we just want to make sure that we're not coming back constantly to get budget amendments. Sometimes that can be problematic, too.
All right, thanks.
So when you have an architect as a councilman staff, sorry, it's in his blood, he, he just can't help it.
And we appreciate it, actually, Scott's really helpful in keeping us, and has some great suggestions. It's nice to have his technical talent to assist us.
Well, good, I'm glad you take it that way. So I see no other speakers up here, carry on, please.
All right, so, let me see, Mr. Hurdman left. So the other project that council asked us to look into and install was the, on Babo Island, put in a sound monitoring system in relation to our airport efforts. So this is $40,000 here to develop that station. I haven't defined or got the readings where that would be, there's been talk about it, the fire station, maybe the BEAC Center, but we'll look into that and move forward.
I just wanted to point out, it's not necessarily the Babo Island as far as the location needs to be. If we're going to put in a station like this that's going to monitor and compare to, to the county's noise monitoring station, and be able to get real live data as far as which airlines are doing it, and, and how much exactly, you know, they're putting out, Babo Island may not be the appropriate place. So that is yet to be determined, I just wanted to make sure it doesn't get anchored in people's minds that it'll be on the island. It could be at Noise Monitoring 7 up by the dunes, or wherever we decide's the best location.
Thank you for that. Okay, I'll ask Mr. Hurdman to come in, and we'll move on to our next category. And before I start this, Mr. Muldoon, you'll have a conflict with the first two items there. So this section of our budget is probably our biggest section that we spend a lot of time on. And the first two programs are our annual both concrete and neighborhood slurry programs, and this year, they're going to be in East Bluff and the Santa Ana Heights and Airport area. Typically, we'll come in and do the concrete program on the general basis in fall, and that's where we go through and replace all the broken curbs, gutter sidewalks, raised concrete programs. We do it in fall because we oftentimes have to tear the street up, do slot cuts next to the concrete, and we scar up the street a little. And then we'll come back in in spring and slurry those same streets and cover up all that work and kind of give it a nice look. So those programs, and I'll stop here if you have any questions on that before we ask the council member back.
This, this is another slush fund, you have an itemized list, right? Just pointing it out, thanks.
Slush fund. Educated estimates. I don't think my boss would give me a slush fund, he's real.
Educated guest fund.
Actually, these numbers come from, and I'm sorry, just from our pavement management plan, and there is some logic behind the, the rough number, you see it changes. So moving on to our next projects below the little dash line, we have a program for concrete street pavement reconstruction, and there's several streets down in the mid part of the peninsula that we've been working on down towards Island Avenue, and we're trying to put a project together there and replace those. As you recall, years ago, we did Bay Avenue, we've done 15th Street, we've done a lot of work in that area. This would continue on in that effort, and that's gas tax being added to that. And then we also have a program for our asphalt street side, and we have a repair program. Of this, $500,000 in gas tax, about $400,000 will go to our arterial systems roughly for potholes and trench failures and things, and another $100,000 will probably go into our neighborhood systems. Below that is our neighborhood, excuse me, our pavement management plan, and we're required in every two and three years to do updates. We go out and survey our streets, look at the pavement index of our streets, which then feeds back into the pavement plan, which goes into the programming of all these, where the streets are going to come from, when, when do we do them, how they're deteriorating, how fast they are, and what we need to do, so. Under that, we have some landscape projects. The first one there, Landscape Median Project, has to do with replacing the turf on Jamboree. As you recall, with the drought many years ago, we turned off our irrigation systems on our medians. We just recently completed San Joaquin Hills and San Miguel, and this is the last of the big medians we need to do, so we're adding a little money there to do that. Luckily, I see the rain today, so, and one way is in Washington, I hear you got considerable rain, so maybe the drought's over, and this will feed right into that. I'm crossing my fingers on that, but. The last one there is a landscape enhancement project. As tease and staff, this is my spick and span project. Oftentimes, we need to do a little added effort in areas. Our municipal operations folks do a great job with their contracts, working through our parks on, on a regular basis. However, once in a while, we need a little more money. For instance, last year, we did an additional add to our park sign program because we had to catch up, and we, we put in there. Here's an area, I know there's some, maybe a irrigation pump that needs to go in Sunset Ridge Park, maybe some fill-in. I've heard some things from various folks about something maybe on Newport Island. There are some areas on the peninsula I've seen that just need a little love, that maybe added, added, for instance, we did the Babo Boulevard landscaping, and it takes a lot of abuse sometimes from all the summer traffic, and as I walked it the other day, I saw areas that need added, plants replaced. So this would be a program that we would go ahead and help the other normal contracts. And then I'll stop on this page if there's any questions.
Dixon, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The landscape, what you just described, the landscape enhancement, thank you, because I do hear a lot from our residents, very complimentary of the, the current vegetation, but needing to be updated and replaced and changed out because plants do die eventually, I guess, and so I appreciate your attention to this and the maintenance of that. The, could you just talk a moment on the pavement management plan? Because is that the plan to just identify which streets are going to be repaved at a certain, to meet the standards and the performance standards, and just to explain it?
Yes, this is a, a plan, actually a software program with field input, and it evaluates all our pavement through our, our city, and the pavement is looked at, like I said, every two years and three years. I think arterials are two years, and residential streets are three years, and we do what we call a pavement index on that. As you know, streets wear differently due to age, traffic load, location, et cetera. So some will last a long time, some arterials might get a lot more wear, high average daily traffic, and it, it wears quicker. So it looks at that, and then the, the software calculates that index, and then it also goes into the plan how quick we should start doing streets. And there's a seven-year plan, it's on our website. Actually, it's, it's further out than that, and you can actually see what we're looking at doing several years out. I was just looking today, for instance, there's a question about Coron del Mar coming up, and, and we're going to be looking at redoing Coast Highway in three years out there on the plan, so at least I have a goal to kind of work towards and plan other projects. so at least I have a goal to kind of work towards and plan other projects around that.
The reason why I asked you to explain that, just for really the public benefit, to understand, we are very fortunate as a city to have not only the plan and the software to make it a robust plan, I presume, but that we actually do have a dedicated scheduled replacement improvement plan for our streets. The more I've gotten involved with organizations and meet with other electeds around Orange County, I realize how fortunate we are. There are certain cities in Orange County that have not repaved their streets in 20 years, and I don't think there's a single piece of street pavement in Newport Beach that hasn't been addressed every seven or eight years. So I think that's one of the many benefits of living in Newport Beach and where our staff is aggressive at going after, whether it's gas tax funds or other source of funds to make sure we have saved streets, so, and it also affects our quality of life and our property values, so, thank you, and I just, that was just a public service announcement.
Excuse me, Mr. Webb, I'm going to take a timeout from this for a moment and hand the ball over to our mayor pro tem for a presentation.
Awesome. Principal Bolton, you want to come up? Then you can bring up whomever you'd like as well. So this is a fun one because the, for folks in the audience, this is the Newport Harbor High School Women's Water Polo Team, and they won four to three over Santa Barbara to win the CIF Southern Section Division Two Championship. On a last-second goal, if I recall correctly, in fact, I think I even got to see it, first off, the reason that, one of the big reasons we're doing this is because I got one of the most excited text messages from Principal Bolton telling me how this girl's just won, and then I think Matt Sabo over at the Daily Pilot put up the video almost immediately, too, so we got to see it, which was phenomenal. So from our city council, we wanted to say congratulations and recognize you for all the work, practice, and ultimate victory here. So Principal Bolton, if you wouldn't mind introducing maybe a few folks, and Mike's yours.
Absolutely, but just very quickly, Mayor Duffield, city council members, city manager, Mr. Kiff, and distinguished guests, thank you for inviting us, and it was an exhilarating game. It's the 42nd CIF championship in our school's history, and it's the sixth CIF championship for the women's program at Newport Harbor, and we're very proud of that. These young women here exemplify our most cherished values on a daily basis, they are student athletes through and through, they're excellent in the classroom, they're role models on campus, they're leaders on campus, and they're also incredible athletes in the pool. And so, on behalf of everybody at Newport Harbor, thank you very much. And Coach Maelstrom, who actually has been coaching at Newport Harbor for almost 20 years, this is, he's stepping down, but what a way to go out. He's going to continue teaching math at Newport Harbor, but going out on top is a great way to go out. So thank you very much, and as always, go Sailors.
Great, well. Yep, Coach, if you want to say anything as well?
I just want to say how honorable it is to represent the city of Newport Beach, bringing home a CIF championship for not only our school, but our city, and to be presented in this honor is really cool. Do we have everybody here, our whole team? So we have.
They went to the wrong place, but they're here now.
We're missing a few people, but I think we should get our team captain up here, Jessica Lynch, come on up. I mean, they all are phenomenal girls, I don't know if we need to introduce them all, but Jessica was the leader of our team, three-year VRC starter, and we're really proud, and she's proud of the team, and we just had our banquet last night, and we put a little closure to our season, and this is another little celebration that we're really excited to be a part of, and we appreciate you guys honoring us and having us here tonight.
Phenomenal. So our mayor is actually a graduate of Newport Harbor High School, so I'm going to have you make sure that you go down and take the picture.
I had to ask this question. So at the beginning of the year, honest truth, did you actually think that you could pull this off?
Oh, yeah.
So what you're saying is you had pressure because you had to pull it off?
Been a while since we've had a CIF championship, and this is a really, you know, quality bunch of girls, and they've worked really hard for this, and I think any team's got a shot at winning a championship if they, if they work really hard at it, and they play well as a team, and we certainly did that this year.
Well, as a graduate there and a sportsman there, I am very, very proud of you guys.
Thank you very much.
So you know, this means they'll probably move you up to Division One next year, right?
Yes.
Mayor Duffield is also a member of our Hall of Fame, so another distinguished honor.
Good job.
Well, that was fun. All right, Mr. Webb, you can get back to the boring stuff, sorry, the important stuff.
I'll try to spice it up for you. Don't do that. All right. And just a real quick note on what Councilmember Dixon mentioned, I want to thank you for your contribution to the general fund into the program, as many cities don't do that, they spend a lot of money, but they don't do that. You'll notice on this place where you see the general fund denotations behind it, a lot of our programs are funded by that $5 million, so thank you. So on our next street and drainage page, we have several large overlay projects coming, one of them is MacArthur Boulevard from Benita Canyon down to 73, that's following our recent project out here, and also on University from 73 to Jamboree. Again, this will be coming through as a rebudget with added money. We're looking at also overlaying Marguerite Avenue between Fifth and San Joaquin Hills Road, and Hospital between Superior and Placentia. Ocean Boulevard, we've been looking at for several years, as you know, we've done most of Ocean Boulevard, but there's one segment left from Carnation to Goldenrod that we're looking at completing, so there's money in here to do some design work on that and move that forward. I think there'll be some community discussion on that from what we know, so we'll need to work with council and the community on that project. And then Irvine Avenue pavement, we're going to do additional work from 16th to Santiago, and I have a project of our Newport Boulevard and West Coast Highway, this is, right, we're trying to deal with the merge lane right there at the arches, so we're continuing on that effort. And then a new project is on Bison pavement rehabilitation, I'm sorry, I didn't put the limits on that, but I think it's the whole limit of Bison from MacArthur to Irvine, City of Irvine. And then Benita Canyon, again, from MacArthur, if I recall, all the way over to the City of Irvine, city limits, and also San Joaquin Hills Road, we're going to be doing from Jamboree to MacArthur. I'll stop on San Joaquin Hills Road, just noting that this is our road maintenance and rehab program that you're going to see later tonight, this is the SB1 money. And what we're doing here, just for the sake of counting and keeping clear channels, is we're putting all our money, about $1.4 million, I believe, into this one project to do it, so it's easy on the counting side. That's always good with us because we have to deal with the state later on, and how do we close projects out. So I'll stop on this page to see if there's any questions.
I have a quick question. Okay, you just clarified on the SB1 money, but the prior listings for GT for gas tax, what is that source?
Because it's about a $1.6 million project, we need other funds, so we have some gas tax money to make up the difference between the SB1 money, and also, if you recall, we were successful in getting a rubberized pavement asphalt grant from California Recycle, and there's about $240,000 in that, so we split among all these where you see the CF contributions are going in project to put rubberized pavement on these roads.
But let me try to answer your question, I think I know what you're trying to get at. So we use GT for the old gas tax money, and then RMRA for the new gas tax money.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't clear that.
Okay, that's good, well, it's good that the money's coming back, that's the important thing.
Yes, it is, thank you. So the last slide on streets and drainage, we have our streetlight rehabilitation program, and we're looking at doing $300,000 worth of work in here. We have additional storm drain system repairs, we're doing about $500,000 this year, we'll try to do another $400,000 next year on slip lining and repairs of our system. Tide valve replacement, we, you know, we have tide valves in the peninsula and Balboa Island, we have to keep those programs up, so we're going to be doing replacements this year. And then I mentioned earlier, the West Coast Highway median re-landscaping, this will be Phase Two, and we're looking at adding another $1 million from neighborhood enhancement into that program.
And just note for the record, the Councilman Hurdman is leaving, but did anyone have any questions about the top items there? Okay.
Three of the projects on this program is the Marine Avenue reconstruction, and we're looking at basically replacing Marine Avenue from property line to property line on Balboa Island, and there is currently a committee on the island working on that, actually, Mark sits on that committee and is working with the neighborhood on how to best to put that street back. Another program we're looking at here, let me stop, the last project on here is the Marine Avenue drainage that'll go with the Marine Avenue construction, so those kind of go hand in hand when we're replacing the street. But I'll go back to the one I skipped, Balboa Island Drainage Master Plan. This is, this is an effort we're going to start looking at on how to change the drainage on Balboa Island. This came from the Tideline's Master Plan. Currently, we have a real kind of historic method that we use tide valves, we have crews that monitor the tides, they change and open and close the tides on the valves, excuse me, on the tides. We're looking at trying to automate that and making it more point-specific. We have a lot of drains now, we want to turn it over to maybe a pump system, and this is what's been done in many cities, for instance, Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, and a lot of cities that are low-lying, they go to an automated pump system where the drainage is collected and the pump's going automatically to turn it out, we won't need to send crews out to pump the water out during rain. We also collect the trash through these systems more efficiently, and then the low-flow is pumped off through a connection to the sewer. So we're going to start looking at the design of that, that'll help us with any kind of seawater rise or flooding problems we have now, and it's important we look at this now as we get into, probably down the road, start replacing those streets. We need to get on Balboa Island and start replacing those concrete streets, we got to figure out the drainage first, so that's what that program is. I will pause here.
Yeah. Dave, so generally speaking, I know that we've got a committee, and I know it's going to be also fun, I'm sure, to work through this project, but I mean, generally speaking, what are we, what's the timetable looking like for that? What are we generally in concept thinking things will look like when we're, when we're working on the Marine Avenue reconstruction? And then one side note, I remember maybe a year ago, we were working through some of the issues with the Village Inn, and when the Village, and one of the things about the Village Inn was in putting the bike, gosh, I can't remember even what they're called.
Bike rails?
Bike racks.
Yeah, okay, so we had those installed. How are those doing? Should we reconfigure any of those as we're going through this? How's the, basically, how's the process looking right now? And how are the, are the trees going to hold up? What's the process?
Let me ask Mark, because Mark actually sits on that committee with him, and he can give you some more details on that.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neil, so we've been working with the island, and they have a special committee made up of about 20 different people, including several merchants and folks from both islands, the Little Island and the Big Island, too. And so we've been walking through and trying to figure out what are items of interest to the community on Marine Avenue, everything from do nothing to completely rebuild and replace the street. I'll try to answer some of those questions. So in terms of the trees, what we know on the trees is, is that every year, there's anywhere from one to three or four trees that we remove. And so, doing the math over the next 10 years, most of those trees are going to be removed by the city because as they, as they, you know, die out and they become an issue, then the city's going to remove those. So long-term, their viability is going to change, and so that's being presented to the community and for them to decide that, and so they're looking at what tree options they have, you know, height of trees and things like that are very important to them. But we're laying out several different alternatives to basically redo all of Marine Avenue, including all of those bike features and bulbouts and seating and, you know, decorative crosswalks and pavements, and we're looking at possibly having by this summer, having some items to be circulating through the greater community to see what they're interested in, and we're targeting right now a potential project of possibly January of 2020 or January of 2021. So, because we really know there's really a five-month construction window out there.
And so, when we're looking at the rebudgeting and then totaling $250,000, what's that $250 going toward?
So the money we have allocated now would bring us to kind of finish off some of our concept design, and that would go towards full-blown engineering design or architectural design.
Okay, all right.
For this next fiscal year. And your question about the bike racks or the bike corrals, we installed one of them in the 200 block, and then we have a second one that's going in the 300 block later this month. They've been very popular, folks like them, they seem to be well-used, they seem to fit in pretty well, we've gotten very good response from them.
And just to follow up, you'll see that concept plan as it starts to develop, we'll bring it to council because we want your input and blessing in that plan before we move forward on a construction project. So with this, other than Mr. Hurd, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurdman's three projects, any other comments or concerns on street drainage or landscaping? So our next funding category is our transportation area, and our first project there is the Balboa Peninsula Trolley, we've talked about a bit at various open sessions. We're looking at adding about $120,000 from the BVAC, we just had a discussion on this in their February meeting, into this program to keep it going. I'll note that staff is working with OCTA right now to try to capture more grant funding possibly for that program. There's another call-out, we're trying to massage it because I know our efforts is trying to go to a longer trolley schedule, so we'll keep you posted on that. We also have another project in here, our oceanfront bike safety program, and we've talked a lot about the boardwalk and the things we're trying to do there. One of our projects we'd like to do is some improvements down at E Street where we have some conflicts and some of our residents and even our guests who come down there, maybe make it easier for them to turn around, reduce some of those conflicts there, so we have a project in there for that. Our traffic signal rehabilitation program, we have 121 traffic signals, and we're a little, we're trying to do about three of those a year currently, we could probably do a little bit more, but we're, we've been working aggressively on that, so this will cover those three signals, I'm hoping. And then we talked about our Balboa Peninsula Crosswalk Study a while back, this is Phase Two that's coming out, we have some lighting and bulbouts that we'll be adding in addition to the current project this year that'll be doing crosswalk improvements and signage and things. Another traffic study that's in the works, in fact, I just recently met with the community up in Dover Shores, they have some real concerns about neighborhood traffic speeding, so the police department and public work staff are up there working with the community, and they have the petitions ready and meter policies, so we're putting money in to start a neighborhood traffic study in the Dover Shores area. And lastly, we have a category for traffic striping and signage and markings. This is a little higher than we had last year, and again, this is one of my little spick and span areas, there's a lot of signs that we might be able to remove, to improve, and just help the city look a little better, so we've added some money in this program. And I'll pause here for any questions or thoughts. Okay, moving on. Water quality, a little smaller this year, we've got three projects, these are all existing projects that are moving through, our Arches Storm Drain, which is the diversion over by Arches Restaurant, we have two big drains coming in there, and we're diverting the low-flow to the sewer, hopefully that'll help our long-term postings of bacteria in that area. And then we've got more additional funding for our Water Wheel program as we move forward, we're in the concept development stage and environmental stage on that, so we're going to be working through next year to hopefully get that up and running. And then we have various total max and daily loads, TMDILs, that we are under as a city, and we spent a lot of time and effort on our water quality side completing that, so we have some additional money in here to do our compliance work on that. Any thoughts and questions here? Moving on to parks and harbors and beaches. First project on here, we've had some discussion about, as we talked recently, we were recently awarded an OCTA grant for $2.3 million for the Superior Over Crossing. This is the other crossing in there, this project includes... the Superior Over Crossing. This is the other crossing in there. This project includes both crossings and landing and some additional site work. So, we're going to be undertaking this. A lot of this money is our park acquisition funds that makes up the difference along with our grant that we have in that. We have a program in here for annual playground refurbishments. We try to get several of those a year. This should cover three more playgrounds and the rubberized surface below them as we rehab that. And then, we've had a lot of discussions, and we thought the FFP calls for work on Grant Halle Park Rehabilitation. We'd like to go to an artificial turf field there, change out the lighting system to LED, address the block wall that's having problems there with the trees, and do some upgrades. So, we'd hopefully start the design process this year, and then later, next year or the following year, we'd put in the funding for that reconstruction. Project below that, Jasmine Creek Maintenance Road, if you're familiar with our community youth center. Just above that, below the dam, is a maintenance road that needs repair, so we'll be replacing that this year. And then, we have additional money in here for parkway walls and staircases. If you're familiar with, say, Cliff Park or Irvine Terrace, we have a lot of residual walls with railroad ties that have now reached into their life, and we need to get in there and replace those before we have slope failure. So, we've been, we did a project this year on some staircases, and we're going to be going in and doing additional staircases and walls next year, hopefully. Last project on here is West Newport Park, and we've been actively trying to replace the Lexan panels. If you're familiar with the glass panels along that park, those were mitigation put in originally when the road was widened, and those are the original panels. So, our Municipal Operations Utility Staff have been working to replace those. We did an added effort this year. This won't complete us. It's $100,000. I think we need about another $200,000 to complete the 391 panels, if I recall. But we're making a substantial effort in this budget. So, I'll pause again if there's any questions here. All right.
Wait, Councilman Avery?
Mr. Mayor, Dave, on the big dog here, the Lower Sunset View Park, I think many people have come to realize that we've had a substantial grant for the bridge. And just the funding side of it, just for clarity, the Park and Lou fees, where do those come from?
Those are paid by developers for developer fees to improve our parks and increase our park stock. So, we have a fund of that that is being directed towards us.
And is that from residential or commercial or both?
I believe it comes from all, probably the bulk of it comes from commercial, but I think everything pays, new development pays a portion of that.
All right, great. The lion's share here is the Transportation Circulation Fund grants?
That's correct. Well, Park and Lou is a big one, too.
Is there, do you have a kind of a, just a percentages?
Actually, Mark's got a spreadsheet. We'll give you that in just a second here. $3 million in Park and Lou, $200,000 for the transportation circulation, and the 2.3 from the OCTA grant.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Piotr?
And just to clarification, you said overcrossing. So, the overcrossing that goes across Superior from the city's lot there is what you're referring to? Are you also referring to one that goes over PCH?
Yes, our desires come from the upper Center Ridge Park across Superior, and then again, across Coast Highway.
So, it'll go across Coast Highway, not on the shopping center side by the Jack in the Box. It'll be on the west side of the intersection.
It'll actually be on the shopping center side by the Jack in the Box, is what we're proposing.
It will be. So, we have a preliminary design on how that's going to work and how it'll affect the shopping center yet?
We are actually under design. We're doing geometrics right now, trying to lay that out. That's the tough one on how it lands. We might have to play with the highway a little. The other one is a little easier.
Okay, and so, the 5.55 that you've got itemized here should cover both overcrossings in full?
That's our goal.
All right, thanks.
I'm sorry. Councilman Muldoon?
Thank you. I am here today. Quick question about this. We refresh our recollection. We voted on this with the prior council, correct?
Yes, this is in our current budget, and we're adding to it.
Okay. And can you remember, can you remind us what we voted on? It was a smaller, or just a dollar amount in the design? I actually voted against it, but I'm just trying to recall.
I can look in the current, but it wasn't a lot. There was some seed money. The bulk of this project, that was 100,000, I think it was, which is in our budget. So, we added the grant money from OCTA to it, and we're proposing to add the Park and Lou money to that.
With the Park and Lou money, that's funds that would go towards another park or another project, but are now being dedicated to this project. And that's combined with other monies that we receive from the grant, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, that's my, that's example of scope creep, in my opinion. We're going to be voting on this, though, correct? You're going to be bringing to us another plan with a change, so we can look at that plan like Councilman Piotr asked, and we can decide if it's a good use of funds?
Yes, we can do that. We can have further discussions on this or tonight. That's why we're kind of showing our preliminary plan where we'd like to go next year.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is just because I don't want this to be bootstrapped. I don't want to rely on the prior vote that was made by the prior council with different information and have that turn into a new project done by staff without really oversight from the council. And I think it's great you're able to get those grants, and that would perhaps sway me for the item. But I'm a little shocked to see a bunch of other funds now dedicated towards this growing park essentially. So, I just want to, I would like to see that brought as a separate item. The community probably wants to see it as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. The other Park and Harbor Beaches projects, we've got on the top, there are Lower Harbor Dredging Project. We're keeping $250,000 in there. That's the one we just recently did some evacuation for. And then, we have two swim platforms. One exists and one doesn't. This 10th Street Swim Platform is existing, and we need to replace that. And there's been a request from the Balboa Island to reinstall the Ruby Avenue Swim Platform that used to be there. So, we have money in here for these two swim platforms. We have additional money for beach and bay harbor sand maintenance. And then, we have money in here for bulkheads and seawalls. This is probably our street ends. We're trying to address some of our more older, concerned bulkheads for age and rehabilitation. There's additional money this year we're proposing for the harbor piers. This is per the harbor capital plan that we have also that goes through the Harbor Commission and the Finance Commission. We're up for at least four of those to be rehabilitated, the floats and the piles on that. And we'll be working further with the Harbor Commission Subcommittee on this one. And then, another item that you'll talk tonight about, we put in, I'm sorry, excuse me.
So, we'll go ahead and stop there, so if there's any questions regarding those first items before Mayor Duffield has to leave. Seeing on the, I'll note for the record that Mayor Duffield's going to leave for the Harbor Port Plan and the Eelgrass Survey.
So, two additional projects we're proposing to add is the new Harbor Port Plan effort. This would be money, should the bill successfully pass through our legislation efforts, we would then go into probably starting a group of working around a plan, developing it, getting it through the various resource agencies, and hopefully getting approval from them on that. And this would fund that. Lastly, on this page, we have our Eelgrass Plan. We have to do this every two years to maintain that. We survey all the eelgrass around the edges of the harbor and categorize that so that we can continue our resident dredging. Also, for instance, our Grand Canal dredging will be part of this program. Any other questions?
So, one thing I asked the mayor, if we could do, we've got a number of folks here who are specifically wanting to talk about the Newport Beach Junior Guards, and I know we've got some more to talk about. But coming right on the heels of the parks, harbors, and beaches, it probably makes sense for us to take just a quick break from the presentation, go out into the public for just the Newport Beach Junior Guards, and then come back, finish the presentation, and go to full public comment, if that's okay with?
That'd be great.
Okay, great. So, is that okay, Mr. Mayor? All right. So, at this time, why don't we have folks who are here to talk about the Newport Beach Junior Guards come on up and have some public comment?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name's Graham Harvey. I am chairman of the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation. We are a nonprofit that was formed in 2011 to support the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Program. I'm here tonight, of course, to make some comments regarding the Newport Beach Proposed Junior Lifeguard Building. And specifically, the adding the design phase of the project to the 2018 budget. It's a great idea to do that, and I'm going to get into the details of why in a moment, but I'd like to kind of share with you where this has gone since the last time this came up, about a year ago, at another city council study session. So, on February 14th of 2017, Mr. Kiff gave a presentation of a lot of different projects that were in the capital improvement plan, one of which was the proposed Junior Lifeguard Headquarters Building. At that time, it didn't make it into the annual budget, but did kind of put it on the board, and we were very grateful to see that it was, you know, being considered at the council level. After that meeting, we received plans for the proposed Junior Lifeguard Building from city staff, and we just, they asked us, like, do you think you can raise money towards this? Or, you know, how does this look to you? And we said, we'll let you know. So, we took those plans, and we shared them with our supporters, and we learned a lot. We learned that some people would be willing to open up their checkbooks and make a donation towards the building. We also learned that there's a lot of support in the community for this project. We learned that as the nonprofit's supporting this, we had allies and friends that we didn't really know about before. We received a lot of nice letters and donations and emails and so forth. So, as you're, if, I need to understand, I guess, the mechanics a little bit. Mrs. Dixon, you mentioned adding that to the plan. Is that how this would go? If you could just help me with the process a little bit of how it's added to the budget for next year? Because I heard you mention it earlier in the...
It's, Mr. Mayor, I can explain if you'd like. It could happen one of two ways. My thought was to add it to what's called the Budget Checklist, which the council then approves in June. But the council could also raise their hand and say, there are four votes here to ask me to include it in the proposed budget. It's really kind of up to the council at this point, but those are probably the two paths I would recommend, one or the other. I still kind of default to the checklist because then you can weigh other priorities that are not in the proposed budget in the context of this item. Sorry, that's confusing, I'm sure.
No, that's good. I appreciate that. I guess regardless of how it's presented to you, we would ask that, you know, you realize that this project has some unique qualities to it. And we're not asking, of course, for the entire building to be funded in this phase, but in Phase One. As far as the attributes, so, city staff actually came up with a great plan. Some of you have seen it. So, you have a really good plan. You clearly have support from the community, and you have a nonprofit that is willing to do good work, to raise money, to offset the city's costs for this building once it's finally built. We encourage you to fund the design phase of this project, also because it's a good business decision. It helps us as the fundraisers prove to our donors that something is moving along at the city level. So, in essence, it's allowing us to raise more money faster to eventually give to you. And as far as the foundations concerned, a motion like this would indicate to us that city council is willing to start to formalize a plan, to work together towards the common goal of building the Junior Lifeguard Headquarters Building. So, thank you for your time. We appreciate your consideration of this project, and we look forward to working with you as this moves along.
Great, thank you. Do you have any other, anybody else would like to speak on it? Okay.
My name's Hillary Simon. This is my first city council meeting, and I want to, first of all, say thank you to Mrs. Dixon. Last Thanksgiving, you addressed, what are we going to do with the homeless population in Newport Beach if we're going to close the Santa Ana River? And I was so thankful because I'm actually a homeowner in San Francisco. And to watch a homeless population explode in Pacific Heights where I own a home, you don't think it'll happen to you. It can. And when it does, it's scary. And our house is for sale, and I can't wait to get rid of it. We actually have an app for human defecation in the city of San Francisco and on how to avoid it. So, this is my, this is my, why I'm talking about the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguards. Sorry, Mayber, Mayor. My sons go to Newport Beach Junior Lifeguards. On one occasion, they couldn't use the potty down there, the public potty, because there was a homeless man in there doing something I don't even want to talk about. On another occasion, someone had gotten so sick in the public potty down there. I just want the council members to have a sense of urgency. When you have 1,400 little girls and boys barefoot running out of these public bathrooms, what, there is going to be a risk involved there. And they do have a buddy system, but I do see a risk, a sense of need, and something private for these kids to use. Does that make sense? That's why I wanted to say the San Francisco thing, because it looks like great down there now, but you don't know when it's going to explode. Does that make sense? So, anyway, I would, anything I can do to help, call me. I was actually one of the donors that wrote a big check, and it was really tough to do because I'm like, whoa, I'm writing this huge check, and we don't even have, we have the land, we have the drawing. We don't even have permission to do this. But you know what? I felt so passionate about it that we wrote the check, and we hope we can move forward with it. So, anyway, thank you for listening.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Chris Seib, resident and business owner of Newport Beach, also involved in the foundation. I'll be brief. Just want to express my support for a Junior Lifeguard Building. I have three small children, not yet in the program, but certainly plan to do so. Was involved in the program earlier in my life. And just want to say, you know, some of the reasons why I think moving forward on the Junior Lifeguard Building project are important are primarily, first and foremost, is a safety reason. I was an instructor at Junior Guards for some time before moving on in my career. And just for reference, it's a temporary building, no running water, and use of public restrooms. We do feel that the designs put forth by the city accomplished a lot of those goals of dedicated restrooms for the children, as well as dedicated restrooms for staff, as well as just a much better training facility. I think what's important to recognize, the Junior Guard Program has really touched quite a few people. If you grew up in Newport, chances are, this was a big impact on you. Now, it's 1,400 children a year in facilities that were really designed for 40 people a year. And yes, we went from a single wide to a double wide during that time, but not quite the infrastructure has kept up with it. So, we really ask the council to really provide guidance and, you know, strongly consider moving forward with the next phase here. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Jones. I'm actually also a Newport Beach resident and a former Junior Lifeguard and a former Lifeguard. And I also wanted to echo the sentiments that were mentioned here today by Chris and by Graham. As a Junior Lifeguard over 30 years ago, we're still living in the same conditions that we are today. And that's, again, something that we think is suboptimal, especially for the kids and their exposure and the health reasons that were mentioned already before. So, I just want to, again, mention my support for this.
Thank you. We don't have a ton of time for this, but if you want to come down, please, I encourage you. Just be brief, and I'd love to hear from you.
My name is Ashley Meyer, and I, the Junior Lifeguard Program's been part of my life for over half my life. I was a junior guard, a lifeguard, and instructor, and I have two daughters that I hopefully look forward to becoming Junior Lifeguards in the near future. I know everyone's touched on the safety issue, but, you know, being an instructor and sending your kids to the bathroom over there was always, you know, something in the back of your mind, hoping that everything would go okay because being down there so long, you do know kind of what goes on over by those bathrooms. And also, just that it is such a respected program in the city and in the world. To be honest, if you talk to other programs around the world, they do know Newport Beach Junior Lifeguards. And to have a facility that is equivalent to, you know, the praise that we get from everybody else, having it look professional, be clean, and just represent what the program is, I think, is very important to the future of the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
And council, my name is Jake Janz. Over the last few years, I've had the pleasure of working closely with a few of you, and especially with the city of Newport Beach, to do some special projects in honor of a very unfortunate situation, which was the loss of my brother-in-law, Ben Carlson. We are here tonight, my family and the Ben Carlson Foundation, which I'm representing. We've gotten to see the very best of this community over the last three and a half years. years. We've gotten to see the community shine. We've gotten to see the lifeguard community inside and out, and including the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Program and those who lead that program. We've seen the professionals in action of this department and the celebration, we celebrate all lifeguards as heroes. Beyond that, we are blessed to live in a community that is by the beach. We are also fortunate to have one of the greatest lifeguard organizations in the world, providing ocean water safety to our kids that is second to none. For the last 30 years, the NBJG Program has successfully provided lifesaving techniques and education to our youth, which you all know so well. And that is beyond valuable. And I believe that this project, for whatever reason, has gotten pushed off and brought up and pushed aside, and we're all here tonight just to ask that you hear this. I believe that you've heard some emails, you may have received some emails, and those are going to continue to come in hopes that somebody in this group will champion this project and carry it out. As it's been mentioned tonight, there are a lot of people who have talked to us about how they can help and how they can fund this, but at the same time, they know there hasn't yet been a commitment, a solid commitment from the city. The NBJG Foundation is willing to lead this charge, as they have. I'm here, like I said, endorsing this from the angle of the Ben Carlson Foundation, which were dialed in this community, and people want to help. So whatever you can do for us to lead the way and to open that next door, to give us some sort of promise for us to take and sell to this, this organ, this, this community that wants to give, we'd be very grateful. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. How many more people want to speak on this item? Can you raise your hand? One? Okay.
I'll be quick. I just, Joy Brenner from Corona del Mar, I just want to add a grandparent's perspective. I have two of my five grandchildren that have been part of the Junior Lifeguard Program for the last seven years, and I had no idea they were using the public restroom, that my little girls were going down there and going with maybe other little girls to the public restroom, and regardless of how dirty they might be, just the idea that there are people in there that are not affiliated with the program is really terrifying to me. And so now that I know it, I can't unknow it, and I think the grandparent population in Newport Beach is a really untapped source of funds for this program.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Dickinson. I'm just a parent of two Junior Lifeguards, and my daughter Anna here is here with her friend. They've been doing the program for two years, and I just want to echo what everyone else said about what a fantastic program it is. I don't need to repeat that, I'm sure everyone knows. I thought it was important that they saw everyone who's fighting really hard for this, because, you know, the kids, they, they're very fortunate in Newport Beach, but I think they need to know that all these people, especially the volunteers in the foundation, are working so hard for them. And I just wanted to say, on their, they're too shy to come up, but on their behalf, we would really, really like to see this building happen soon. And, you know, they were so much smaller when they started the program two years ago, and I would just love to see it happen before they end up leaving the program in a couple of years. So I just wanted to express my support for the project. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm not supposed to ever speak for everyone up here, but I'll take a stab at it. I can't imagine anyone here not being very excited as well about this, this opportunity. So we, we look forward to working, working through this and...
Show bad.
Well, we don't need to do that, but at the end of the day, believe me, we really, really liked, appreciated you coming here and telling us this, but we honestly, we're very much, I'm sure, for, for this project. All right, Mr. Webb, we're running, hopefully have enough time to get you through this.
I'll kick it into third gear then, and we'll go through it a little faster here. Next program is water, and there's a list of water projects on here. The, the big ones are the Water Transmission Main Program. We have several big mains in San Joaquin Hills, Jamboree, that we need to address some of the valves. Small project in here to add a utility backup generator. Large project below is our utility folks are kicking off their advanced metering infrastructure project, so there's $3.3 million in there to change at all our meters and put in this, the SCADA for that. And then a couple little projects here, Alta Vista and Hillsboro Pump Stations need work, and some money in here for grade adjustments to valves, and a mixer at the Spigliss Hill Reservoir. Take any questions here?
Just real quick, on the advanced metering infrastructure, does that include the putting on poles to make sure it captures the meter reading as well?
I believe in, Stefan's here tonight, but I believe that has to do with putting in the radio receivers, the meters, and the infrastructure to broadcast and receive that. I'm not specific, it'll be on, not too many light poles, but Stefan, you want to ask, you have anything to that?
For the AMI project, it is for the, there's 20 transmitters, receivers that will go up, and then also the additional 20 repeaters, too. That will go up to the streetlights.
Don't have any more, Stefan. No more time. So I'll just point out, I've, I've asked Dave just recently to consider this. We've, we've got a lot of things going on poles. It'd be awesome to just have a study session or discussion about how, how we ought to be rolling that out with, as we go forward, but that's just a, I wanted to make sure I understood what this, this one was. Thanks.
And we'll assist utilities going through our community development department, too, because they look at all the pole-mounted receivers and things to make sure the community's okay with it. Thank you.
Duffy?
And just note for the record, Councilmember Muldoon recused himself from that item based on his business interest.
I'm going to follow up, quick question. I mean, eventually this replaces our meter readers, but we're not showing anything as far as credit or anticipated savings in this year's budget or next year's budget, right? We've got to get this up and operating, it's going to take a couple of years to get it up and operating.
Yeah, there'll be a time period to get it in, and eventually that would reflect in the operating budget. We'd make the judge adjustment there, because that's where the staffing and the meter readers are paid for.
And this is coming from the Water Enterprise Fund, so the savings would go back there as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, without, no other questions, I'll move on.
I'm sorry to take time, I know we're in a hurry. I just want to just clarify that this is an important, it's a three, at least a $3.3 million. Is this the total cost, or do we see next year we'll be adding to it? And what is the timeframe for this project?
I think this is just the start. There are additional costs, but I don't have all the information on this tonight. I know there was a presentation a while back, but if we can get into more detail, we'd be happy to bring it back.
Well, it is significant investment to improve the wireless reading, improvement efficiencies for meter, water metering, and people could access them wirelessly and on apps. Do a lot of information as well as efficiency management, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'll move into a couple more water projects here. Water system rehabilitation, just the minor pipeline money here for when we're doing projects. We have one of our wells, we have four wells, there's one of our deep wells that needs to be rehabilitated. The other three have already been done just recently. And then, I got to pause here for a second.
And just to note for the record, so Councilman Hurdman's leading for the Babo Island Water Main Replacement, and Councilmember Dixon's leading for the Bay Channel Main Crossing Replacement, and both those are based on conflicts related to their real property interest.
So the Babo Island Water Main Replacement is the second phase. As you know, we're doing Babo Avenue now, or Boulevard Avenue on the island right now, replacing that. This will put the new line in park, and then there's another phase that'll come after this, and we should be done on the island on water mains. And then lastly, we have several channel crossings. If you're familiar, our water mains cross over to Lido Island, they cross from Babo Island under the peninsula. We have a large one that's in the Upper Bay. So we're looking at replacing these. Also, we have one over the Santa Ana River, too. If you're familiar, we get our water underneath the Santa Ana River, comes in our reservoir site. So several main crossings that we need to look at, this will be the design money to take care of that. And I'll look for questions.
Pro Tem? O'Neil?
So Dave, I know we're working on through a water master plan. When do we expect that to come back? And will, do you anticipate that changing or modifying any of our projects on a going-forward basis that are at least included in the CIP?
To the latter question, I don't know if it'll modify what's included. It'll probably update from what we've done, and as you update master plans, aging systems, you usually find something else that would add anything to it. But Mark, do you have a schedule on that?
We expect to bring that back probably in the fall.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then I'll move on to our last, our second last category. This is our wastewater program, and the first pot of money there is to adjust manhole grades. When we do street jobs, we have to adjust the grates out in the street for the valves and the manholes. This covers that. We have, out of our sewer master plan, we have an area where we identify pipelines that need lining and repair. The second project there gives $450,000 to address those needs. And lastly, we have several lift stations in our city, and they need various maintenance and upgrades. So we'll be looking at the Ford Road Lift Station here to do an upgrade on that. With no questions, we'll move on to our last category. This is our miscellaneous category that we have, and our new money we're looking to add this year is, the first one, the B.V.A.C. would like to add some enhanced maintenance to their area. This oftentimes includes steam cleaning, additional maintenance above what we normally do for the other communities, and they'll be using B.V.A.C. money on that. And then there's a whole series of underground districts. I'm sorry, before we get into that, we've got, Mr. Muldoon left, okay. We've got our 28 program that we're doing now, which is Babo Boulevard, and we're looking to continue to purchase some credits. We still need additional revenue to complete that job. And then the last four projects on there are Rule 20B projects we've talked about, where the community goes through a vote and takes on an undergroundy effort. What we're finding is, we're going to put these in the CIP. These are just the numbers that came from the engineer's estimate when the district was formed. We are working with this, some of these numbers are coming in, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to go forward with these projects, including maybe staff-initiated construction of the underground. So we're putting that together and putting in the CIP this year. And I believe if there's questions on this, that's our last category.
I'd just like to know where, where the districts are located. 111 is...
111, 116, and 116B are all on Babo Boulevard on both the south and the north side, roughly between the 48 Streets all the way down to about 23rd. And District 117 is in Corona del Mar, and it's located around Begonia Park. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Just to clarify, all of these costs ultimately will be borne by the residents, correct?
All the 20B, the last four projects, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I just turn it over to any general questions, or Mayor, back to you.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other questions up here. Okay, we'll take it out to public comments. Are there any public comments on this presentation?
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. First, I wanted to say that I share Councilman Muldoon's concern about the multimillion-dollar Lower Sunset View Bridges and the hope that those will be subject to further public review and approval, including, I assume, coastal development permits. Since the Sailing Center Bridge over Coast Highway required one, I assume that these will as well. I, I think the public is a little surprised seeing them going forward so quickly without much public review of exactly what we're building. And speaking of hope, the other comment I wanted to make is that the, the city's announcement in its current budget that it was considering a review of the general plan, as you probably know, has stimulated considerable public interest in the state of our existing general plan, including its implementation program that you're going to be reviewing yourself at your next council meeting two weeks from now. And I just wanted to mention, the very first implementation program in the 2006 General Plan Implementation Program 1.1 says that when the city prepares its annual list of proposed public works, these must be submitted to the Planning Commission for review for conformity with the adopted general plan, which review, I think, was intended to confirm both that the things that you're seeing on the slides here conform to what was promised in the general plan, and also that whatever was promised in the general plan is actually being executed. We haven't seen a timeline for how this is going to be processed, but I assume that Planning Commission review will be coming along. And another interesting thing about that is it also says it's not just a review of our city's capital improvement program, but also those of any external agencies, such as a school district that will be doing public works in our city. And so I'm kind of wondering who is coordinating to see that our Planning Commission is reviewing public works proposals from other agencies. And then finally, it's a little, little late for the Lido Fire Station, but I'm reading the next line in the implementation program, and it says, "When the city acquires property for public purposes," as we did for that fire station, "the Planning Commission is required to review the action and report on its consistency to the general plan." And I kind of think we forgot that, but I hope we're not forgetting the review of these items and the items of other agencies in this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any, anything to contribute? Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to formalize our prior discussion on the Junior Lifeguard, so as I mentioned early in the presentation of Mr. Webb, it was, that item is not included, so the discussion, should it go in on the, what do we call it? The budget?
Checklist.
Checklist? Or should it just be factored into the go-forward plan for continued public review and discussion? So I would recommend just put it in the plan as we go forward. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hurdman?
Yep. I just want to voice my support for what Councilwoman Dixon just said. I'd like to see this become a project, actually labeled a project, that will help the foundation begin the process of raising additional money.
All right, thank you. So, any other comments? I don't see any, so we would like to, at this point, thank you, staff, for that report, and well done. And we'd like to now have public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward. Seeing none. Closed session, Mr. Harp?
Just briefly, the city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss items 4A and B, including meeting with the city manager, Dave Kiff, and assistant city manager, Carol Jacobs, discuss labor negotiations with the unions listed under Agenda Item Number 4A, as well as meeting with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation by the unions and individuals listed under Agenda Item Number 4B related to the Flores versus City of San Gabriel decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We are recessed until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. All right. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the March 13th, 2018 meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
No, thank you, Mayor Duffield. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have invocation by Councilmember Muldoon, and our pleasure of allegiance by Council, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neil.
Thank you. Please rise and bow your head. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here this evening to have public discourse and show each other civility and treat each other with navel-y love. We pray that you bless the city of Newport Beach, the state of California, the United States of America. States of America. In your name we pray, amen.
Please place your hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in a silent mode.
Thank you. All right. We'll now have City Council announcements. These are non-discussion items, and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. So we'll start with Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to report that last week, the mayor and I, along with Public Works Director Dave Webb and Harbor Resources Manager Chris Miller, attended an annual event in Washington, DC organized by a group called CMAG, or California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference. Our mission for going to Washington in an approaching snowstorm was to keep Newport Beach in front of federal agencies and legislators for the purposes of obtaining future federal funding for additional dredging of our harbor. Attending this advocacy mission with us were about 40 representatives of harbors up and down the California coast, and all members of this CMAG group, which exists to optimize California maritime benefits by providing advocacy for the maintenance and improvement of California harbors, ports, and navigation projects. So, it was a really good three days there. We learned a lot. We were there last year, and it's so important for the city to be in front of as many people in Washington legislators as possible if we're going to win funds for dredging. And we're looking at this more long-term, but certainly the harbor will need to be dredged. It's already got high spots in it, so we're looking ahead, and we need to just keep working with this group. Virtually every other port was represented there for the same reason. And we also met with Representative Dana Rohrbacher, our local representative, and who's been very supportive of our efforts, and I'm sure the mayor would agree, but he gave us a very nice personal tour of the Capitol, and it was incredible because of his long tenure. He knows quite a bit about the history and the, all the ins and outs, and some of the secret spots and interesting spots in the Capitol. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was privileged, along with Councilwoman Dixon, to go with the ACCOC, and they have their annual trip up to Sacramento. ACCOC is Association of California Cities of Orange County. And it's an annual legislative trip, and they bring a lot of different speakers in. I'm going to let Councilwoman Dixon address some of those speakers that we heard and the topics that we heard, but Councilwoman Dixon was able to actually moderate one of the sessions. It was a session on pensions, and she did a great job. I just want to make sure, she probably wouldn't be touting herself, so I'll go ahead and do that. I had the opportunity afterwards to stay for that same afternoon a little longer, and met with probably a half a dozen different Assemblymen, Senators, and their staff to talk about the port plan. And so it's nice for them to be able to see a face associated with proposed legislation, and we're going to be dealing with that on Item Number 16 on the agenda tonight. So I won't go into the details of the port plan, but it was a very productive afternoon, and I'll look forward to sharing a little bit more during that item. Thank you.
Excuse me to interrupt. Councilman Avery, did you want to talk about the neighborhood meeting you?
Yes, I could do it now, thank you. So, do we have a slide for this?
You do.
Great. We have another in our continuing updates to the neighbors in the Newport Heights area about our, another meeting for the traffic, school traffic study, and it's tomorrow night, Wednesday, March 14th, as you can see, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And so we've got some results of the traffic study to share with the neighborhood, and there's some great concern, as many people know, with three schools sort of triangulating and the traffic going through there, and the kids going through, walking and biking. So, this is really an effort to bring the neighborhood together and present the findings of the study and some of the recommendations, the directions, and get feedback from everybody. So, I would love to see a great turnout at Mariners Library tomorrow night at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, to follow up on and piggyback what Councilmember Pieter mentioned, the ACCOC, the Associated Cities of California, Orange County, is composed of 30 representatives, elected representatives of the 34 cities of Orange County, and it was organized about 10 years ago, really, to give voice to issues related that are of special import to the cities of Orange County, housing, sober living homes, transportation, and as far as we're concerned, in the City of Newport Beach, looking at the public pension stabilization matter. I call it, specifically call it stabilization, because our efforts are tied into working with CalPERS. The CEO of CalPERS spoke before this panel that I moderated with Senator John Morlock, who chairs the, Vice Chair of the Labor Committee, that many of the pension bills come before. He has a whole battery of bills that we will be looking at as a city to be supportive. And I emphasize again the word stabilization. Our intent is to stabilize our municipal financial structures that all the cities in California are facing with the increased unfunded pension liability, but also to stabilize the pension fund for our employees, so that there is money when they retire, and they expect that money to be there, and we want to make sure that those funds are stabilized. Anyway, it was a very good two days of meetings. I'm glad I went, and it was worthwhile and great to represent our needs here in Newport Beach. Followed up on the Sacramento meeting, we had more pension with John Morlock, Senator John Morlock. We had a pension forum last Friday up in Mayor Protem's district in the Newport Coast Community Room, which is a wonderful community center. And again, we had a pension forum hosted by ACCOC, and I co-hosted with other electeds, and really, again, to do more deep dive on the public pension issues, and CalPERS representatives were there, and a good discussion with other city managers. Mr. Kiff was there, and our financial director, Dan, was there, as were other financial directors and city managers from the 33 cities. So, last week was Pension Week. A lot of good work, and we're, as my motto currently is, is we're not going to keep talking about it, we're going to do something about this, and the legislative front is our next focus. Just a couple of public announcements. I want to give a shout-out to Dory Deli for its fifth beach cleanup, which was held last Saturday. I think we might have a slide coming up here. Every six months, Dory Deli organizes customers, employees, residents, and families to come out and clean our beaches, and it's just amazing turnout that they get. They promote it, and it's great for our community, and it's a great community-building effort as well. So, thank you, Dory Deli. A couple of meetings to be aware of. Mark your calendar tomorrow, Wednesday, March 14th, Speak Up Newport, monthly meeting right here in the community room, and the topic is crime, crime safety, crime prevention. We'll have some representatives of our fine police department, and everything is free. Free food donated by, why can't I remember? Pardon me?
Bungalow?
Bungalow, of course. The bungalow, absolutely. Bungalow, free food, free parking, and free good information. And then on Thursday, March 15th, at 3:00 PM, is our Finance Committee. It's not free, but we're not giving anything away, but we are learning about, we give you free financial updates, so we look forward to our interested citizens who would attend the Finance Committee meeting. And I think that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman?
Just a few, just want to let you know what I've been doing over the last two weeks. Was invited by Harborview Homeowners Association to speak at their annual meeting, which I did, just gave them an update on council activities and projects within the city. I attended lifeguard tryouts, along with Mayor Protem O'Neill and Councilman Avery. First time I've attended that, it was excellent. We had an airport forum last Friday that was well-attended. Good information was provided. We continue to get educated about how John Wayne Airport runs and operates through these forums. I attended the pension forum also last Friday. Excellent, excellent four hours I spent in the morning. And I'm going to go ahead and mention this. It doesn't apply to everyone, however, if you own a dog, have a dog, and you're a dog walker on Balboa Island, we have habitual and have had a historic problem with dog waste on the boardwalk. And myself and the president of the Balboa Island Improvement Association and the vice president met with staff the other day, and we're going to start a, kick off a public relations program to try and do something about this problem that is historic and has been there forever. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon?
I have none.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Few things. The Newport Beach Public Library Foundation Witty Lecture Series continues. Last couple weeks ago was David Edelman, which was fantastic. Lifeguard tryouts. Thanks so much to the Fire Department and our lifeguards for hosting. Councilman Hurdman, Councilman Avery, and me, and my family, they even let me use the air horn, which scared my three-and-a-half-year-old to death. And then, last week, same day, I was able to attend the OCTA Mayor's Forum, the Orange County Animal Shelter Ribbon Cutting, and the Orange County Mayor's Meeting regarding homelessness. And those first, the first and third were put together by Michelle Steele at our Board of Supervisors, so I just want to say thank you for her continuing dedication to the folks in her community. This morning, I was able to attend the Orange County Great Park Wildlife Corridor Ground Breaking. We actually had a handful of our residents there, and it's going to be actually quite amazing that five, what Five Point's been doing over in the Great Park there. It's going to connect inland all the way down to Crystal Cove, so it's pretty impressive. And then upcoming, and just a few things, Corona Del Mar High School Learning Resource Center Ribbon Cutting is tomorrow afternoon. Spirit Run is Sunday, so I hope you're participating. If you're not participating, don't drive around Fashion Island on Sunday morning. And then the Mayor's Egg Roll, March 24th, and then the Special Olympics Unity Torch Walk is April 5th at the Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just comment briefly on the Washington trip. This is my second trip there, and I can assure you that I was always, when I was a kid, I was wondering, in my lifetime, we've had the bay fill up with sediment three times, and I've always wondered, why didn't we dredge? And I now know, because if you don't go to Washington, and you don't stand in line and ask, you won't get. So, you may not get everything you want, but for sure, you have to participate. And we participated with CPAC, which is a coalition of harbors and bays up and down the coast, and we've gotten to know these folks, and we all have different needs and such, but we're all in it together, and it makes for an impressive group. And we've learned to state our needs quickly and efficiently, and with the help of staff. Been very helpful, and it's amazing how much time they put in every day and every week, but to fly there and to do what you guys do and spend 24/7, it's amazing. So, they're very productive and looking forward to continuing that. So, with that, we will move on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, and these are matters for discussion, this is not for discussion, excuse me, not for discussion. This is merely to see if there are three council members who would like to discuss the matters at a future date. And so I'm going to ask for a show of hands. Councilman Pieter has asked for whether to express the city's support for SB 11394, Newman 218, relating to paid signature gathering efforts. So, at this time, I'd like to have a show of hands who would like to do that. One, two.
Councilmember Dixon?
Does everybody know what it is?
Well, you can't discuss it, so...
Well, I can explain the item, right?
Make it a point.
I think we've switched to basically traditional, traditionally, what we've done is just basically no discussion on it, is there three people to bring it back.
Okay, I didn't understand what you just said.
So, no discussion.
So, can you, can I at least explain what it is? Because the item doesn't tell you exactly what it is.
Well, I'll briefly explain what it is. It's basically a Senate bill that would make it a crime if people were to pay signature gatherers based on the total number of signatures gathered, as opposed to kind of just a flat hourly rate. So that's basically what it is.
All right. So, can I see a show of hands? I guess not. So, all right. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are Items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, thank you. Are there any items up here that anyone would like to pull? I'll start with Miss Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Councilman Pieter?
Staff going to pull Number 11.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, eight.
Thank you. And Councilman Hurdman?
Eight.
So, you both are pulling twice, so... All right. Councilman Muldoon?
None.
And Mayor Protem O'Neill?
None.
And I have none.
Mr. Mayor, to answer Mr. Pieter's question, if you approve the consent calendar with the memo here, Item 11 would be continued indefinitely. We want to go ahead and review some of the costs associated with that.
I move approval of the consent calendar with Number 8 being pulled by Councilwoman Dixon, and Number 11 being amended for a continuance indefinitely.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to, at this time, go to public comments on the consent calendar. Please come up. Are there any comments on the consent calendar this time? You're kidding me. Jim? Are you sick? Hope you're well. All right. Phew. Moving on. Any council comments? Let's go...
Did we vote on the consent calendar?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, let's vote, sorry. So shocking, I'm shocked. I don't know what to do.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance tile for Item 3, Ordinance Number 2018-2, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach granting non-exclusive solid waste franchises to provide solid waste handling services within the City of Newport Beach. Mayor Duffield, if you could please vote.
Sorry.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Items removed from the consent calendar. We'll start with Councilman Pieter, Number 11. Oh, that's right, continued, sorry. Councilwoman Dixon, Number 8?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, it might help to frame the issue a little bit. I had asked our city clerk to queue up a presentation. Since I was the one who asked to have this put on, it might make sense to put a little bit of context if Councilwoman-
bit of context if Councilwoman Dixon doesn't mind.
Oh, sure.
That's good.
Thank you.
So, so everyone has a clear concept of this. In 1976, California Supreme Court was asked to weigh in on the use of public funding for advocacy on a ballot initiative. And as you can read, a fundamental precept of this nation's democratic electoral process is that the government may not take sides in election contests or bestow an unfair advantage on one of several competing factions. That's been the law since '76. Next slide, please. It got a little bit carved out in 2009 by the same California Supreme Court in Vargas versus the City of Salinas, when it essentially allowed a governmental agency to spend money so long as it does not expend public funds to mount a campaign on the measure. And so what's happened is municipalities up and down the state, and I'll list a lot of them, have essentially driven a Mack truck through this tiny little exception. Let's go to the next slide, please. So what I wanted to do is I want to show just one city's efforts on increasing a tax measure. And this is a partial list of this one city's efforts. They paid a consultant to come in and they did, first off, they did public polling to determine what was most important to the citizens. And then they took that information and then built it into the wording. The actual consultant did the wording itself for the ballot initiative. And then started coordinating a strategic outlook outreach program, which included writing all of the consultant, not the staff. The consultant did a lot of outreach into the community and would write the first draft for things to come from the city manager, from city finance directors. And these things were being sent out in emails from the city, website updates, actual physical mailings. And in fact, they were going out and giving talking points for Speakers Bureau. And then they also were, amazingly enough, sending this information in utility bill inserts. And this happens all up and down the state. Next slide, please. And then this is the, this was the consultants bragging that after they got it, they were actually bragging about how they passed it. And when you're talking about an informational campaign, you can't brag about success or failure. The only thing you can brag about is whether you gave information. And so when we're talking about the question of was this a success or failure, the only question is, were the residents educated? But you can tell that's not what consultants out in this world look at. Let's go to the next slide. This is another description, and I just pulled an RFP process from another city. And just FYI, this is how the consultants are selling themselves out in the, up and down the state. One of them says they specialize in preparing public agencies for tough revenue measures and have enacted over $27 billion in California revenue measures with a 94% success rate. Again, it's not a success or failure whether the tax was increased or not, but that's how they define themselves. The one down below it, and this is the same RFP process. Another consultant offset themselves as, why should you choose us because we win? There is no winning or losing in information, but this is how they're selling, this is how it's being sold to cities. And so let's go to the next slide. And I just want to highlight this one because this one really bothered me, so much so that I actually, I really got into this. This is from a magazine that's for the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, which everyone should read because it's just fascinating articles. But this was from last year, and this was written by the finance director from the City of Stanton. And Stanton, you all probably know, passed a tax, a sales tax increase. So afterward, the finance director was talking about this, and lessons learned. And then it said, what went right? We followed the items and the how-to above. What went wrong? This is an actual finance director writing the following words. "We didn't suppress the opposition with one-on-one meetings early." So the question is, does Newport Beach want to come anywhere near this or anywhere near any of the consultants that are selling themselves on winning and losing based on whether a tax is passed or not? Let's go to the next slide. This is, the city's listed as clients by one of those consultants that I referenced. So in case you're wondering whether this is an isolated event, let's go to the next slide. Let's go to the next slide. So the question, I just, it's unbelievable that this is happening up and down the state of California, and it is happening in increasing frequency. And the thing about, the thing about this, why we should be looking at this, and I'm more than happy to talk about the wording of the policy. But fundamentally, Newport Beach cannot be in the business of hiring a consultant or frankly, expending public money to do education efforts that define themselves by success or failure of whether a tax initiative is passed. So there seemed to be some misunderstanding of what was, what we were trying to do here. But I know Councilwoman Dixon wanted to talk, but I wanted to at least provide context to why this, why this exists. And I'll tell you, this same thing is going to happen, and billions of dollars of increases will happen in 2018 because of, because people are using that limited exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Protem O'Neil. Your summary is very informative and frankly helps to shape my comments because I'm in violent agreement with you. So I think that is a noble endeavor, a noble purpose, seeing the consequences of aggressive tax increase efforts using outside consultants. So I totally agree. What I want to do is perhaps tweak your language a little bit, the language of the resolution and what we are intending to do. Because the language as you've, as has been proposed this evening, would actually prevent us as a council from taking a position to oppose these measures that you just, the suppress the opposition, if you will. We could not educate, we would be prohibited from educating our residents as to the effects of a proposed tax increase. So in the spirit of wanting to be sure that we can educate, I would like to propose an amendment. Let me get my notes here, what we said, that I would move the staff recommendation with an amendment to council policy, A3, to replace the phrase for or against with the phrase in, what did I say, in favor of local tax measures and to replace political consulting for the word public education. So basically, what I was going to make a long speech about, or hopefully not too long, is why we would, as a council, suppress, suppress our own ability to educate, not advocate, but educate our residents as to why a tax increase would not be in their best interest. Just hypothetically, just for purposes of understanding why we would oppose. And suppose a newly or differently constituted Board of Supervisors, because this relates to county measures, local or county measures. For example, a differently constituted Board of Supervisors could, in the future, place a measure on the county ballot requiring a countywide sales tax increase to support the county's share of cost to support a bullet train expansion through Orange County or some other financing scheme. Well, my recommendation is that by tweaking this proposed language this evening, we would be allowed to, if we were to take a position to recommend opposition, that we would be able to educate voters why their elected representatives have taken action to oppose. So we don't want to, overall, I just don't want to silence or gag ourselves or future councils, keeping us from opposing a proposed tax increase. So, Mr. O'Neil, if you would be willing to make those amendments, I would like to propose them.
A second.
Thank you.
Councilman Piattar?
So I agree with what you're doing. And I guess the question I've got is, Councilwoman Dixon, are you saying that we can use public dollars to educate the public on being against a tax but not for a tax?
Well, to be, to educate the public on our position, what the resolution says is about for tax measures, and I want to be able to, for tax proposals, I would want to say, in opposition to a tax increase, we would want to have that opportunity to be able to speak because this resolution would not allow for opposition.
Well, it's not allowing for the public funding through a quote "education" process on taking sides on a, on a local tax issue. And it doesn't say which side. So basically, you're saying it's okay to do it if we're against it, but not if we're for it? Not if it's a tax increase? If it's a tax increase?
I'm just saying I don't want to prohibit the public education.
I think the whole intent of this is that the public education loophole has gotten so ridiculous that it's no longer a guideline.
Well, I mean, we've gone in there. We would prohibit public opinion polling, political consulting, oh, and insert political consulting in place of public education. We're not prohibiting public education, but political consulting, public opinion polling, studies, written or verbal communications, as Mr. O'Neil has described, those would be appropriate to prohibit. But public education to inform our electorate in a straightforward manner without the use of political consultants.
Again, I think.
Point of order, this isn't what we're trying to do.
So yeah, I would, I would have a problem with that because the whole intent of it is to close the loophole, and anything can be called public education. Even this council did that previously. And you'll see that, like Mr. O'Neil's pointed out, that this is almost exclusively used towards tax increases. And you don't see it in the form of general plans or other things, although this council tried to sell a charter amendment based on red light cameras, so you could use that as another thing. I don't know that they actually hired and did a survey or political consultants for that. But I need to even take this a step further. This is a council policy that you're proposing, which at any time, a council majority can change. I would almost say, we ought to look at drafting this and making it a charter amendment that could go on the November ballot as part of our furthering on our tax pledge and allowing the voters to have a say over borrowing and taxes. Thank you.
Councilman Hurdman?
Thank you, Mayor Duffy, Duffield, excuse me. Councilman O'Neil, I think your motives are pure. I totally understand what you're trying to do here. I just, I want to bring up just a few things. I guess ask a few questions. State law already prohibits public agencies from spending public funds to support or oppose ballot measures. My, this, I guess, is a question. However, this state law does not prevent our voluntary, voluntarily spending time in the preparation of a tax measure or the explanation of the need for a tax measure or advocating for a particular position that is in the best interest of our community and our constituents. As long as we're not spending money doing it, correct?
Again, we're not.
We can't do that, huh?
So.
When did we come up with this policy that we cannot ask each other questions up here? Why can we not have dialogue with each other?
Point of order. May I get that to the attorney?
Okay.
I don't think it's appropriate probably to direct questions to the other council members. They don't have to answer your questions. You can make your statements. You can direct questions to staff, and they can answer your questions.
Okay. Well, at least that's my understanding. If I, as an individual, or if I, as a council member in the City of Newport Beach, want to volunteer my time in terms of the preparation of a tax measure, whether I'm for it or against it, or in the explanation of it, the education of it to individuals within the community, as long as I'm not spending any city money in this effort, then I am not being denied my Second Amendment constitutional rights. So I'm concerned about the unintended consequences regarding this, this, this action. For example, would this resolution present, prevent our city from being represented in, for example, the preparation of any extension of our, of our local transportation funding, Measure M, as a ballot measure? In the case of a natural disaster in our city, would this resolution prohibit the city from explaining the need for special funding to the voters? What would happen if we had a tsunami, big fire, or an earthquake? I'm just concerned about the unintended consequences of this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon?
Thank you. Well, first off, Law School Professor O'Neil, I appreciated that presentation. As a lawyer myself, I enjoy this sort of dialogue. And Councilwoman Dixon, clearly you are married to a formidable lawyer. Not that you couldn't be a lawyer and you're unright. As I see this council policy, it's internal policy that regulates or would help guide us in our decision process. It wouldn't trump state law, nor would it trump free speech rights under the First Amendment for private citizens or for the council. So I personally, for that reason, would not really have a problem with this. Just want to remind everyone to concur with Councilman Piattar. These internal policies can be waived, but they're often nice to have. So thank you, Councilman O'Neil. Mayor Protem O'Neil.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yeah, I'm confident that this wouldn't prohibit anyone on city council from stating their own personal views. And if the, if a future council down the road wanted to increase taxes, it wouldn't stop them from obviously creating a staff report on that. And then on top of that, the fact that we've got to carve out in the last sentence there that would allow staff to respond to any questions from, from the public or from members, from city councils, I think that this is pretty well-covered. And admittedly, this is a council policy, and I think a lot of folks out in the community sometimes forget that, even folks who write unnecessarily personal op-eds, probably forget that, and I'm being generous when I say that. But my, if there is an emergency, obviously, we have the ability to fix this. It's not, really appealing to fear mongering in the worst-case scenarios when we're trying to do something that's the right thing to do is completely unnecessary. And at the end of the day, gets us nowhere other than, you know, battering at each other in ways that are just, I find unnecessary. So in this particular situation, it strikes me that moving forward on a council policy where we, we know it's a problem, we know it's an issue out in the, in the state, and we're coming at it from a fiscally responsible and taxpayer-friendly way is the right way to go.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman?
Earlier, well, actually, it was last year, when Councilman Muldoon was mayor, we passed a, an item on an agenda that requires five votes here up on the city council in order to pass a tax measure. So we've got some extra protection written in there also. So I, again, I'm concerned about the unintended consequences, and I appreciate your feedback, Mayor Kevin, on my questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
I, I'm concerned that this is an important matter. As I said previously, I do not want to see happen in Newport Beach what we saw in those examples that Mayor Protem presented. On the other hand, I want to be, it's like be careful what you wish for. We don't, the unintended consequences, we do not want certainly to limit or restrict anyone's freedom of speech. And I just wonder if we need more public discourse on this and to table this for more discussion. I just am concerned, it's a consent item. Consent items are technically for technical matters, administrative matters, routine. And I think this involves more thoughtful deliberation in the direction that we were headed, and Mr. O'Neil was agreeable to those revisions, because I do want to be sure that we protect public education, we do not encourage the political consulting part of it, and that we want a council to be able to communicate, not advocate, but communicate with the residents as to our position for and against, for or against a fiscal-related matter. And I guess I would motion, withdraw my original motion if I can, or second, whatever I did. I'd like to motion, make a motion to table so we give this the thoughtful discussion that it deserves because it is important. And I appreciate Mr. O'Neil bringing it forward, and we don't want to be like these other cities. Let's just do it right. Even though it's only a council policy, it does take debate and public discussion to waive it. So I would hope that we can table this for future discussion. Thank you.
There's, what? Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. So I have Councilman Avery. So I have Councilman Avery.
It's--
Point of order, isn't there already a motion on the table? So this is really a substitute motion?
Yes.
And as a point of order, a motion to table is non-debatable.
Okay, I'm sorry. So do we want to go to public comments?
There's, as a, Mr. Harp, if you wouldn't mind helping--
Point of order, help us. Yep.
So the motion's already been made and seconded. Someone can make a substitute motion if they want to maybe continue the item as opposed to tabling it. That would be, that'd be the appropriate motion.
Yes, I'd be willing certainly to continue the item.
And I'll agree with that as far as my second.
We have the motion and a substitute motion, and we probably should take public comment.
All right. Are there any public comments on this item?
This is not why I came here tonight. In fact, I wasn't going to come here tonight, but it stopped raining. But it is such a pleasure to be watching a city council that can disagree respectfully. Unfortunately, I live right on the border of Newport and Costa Mesa, and what is going on in Costa Mesa is absolutely insane, not transparent. I consider transparency to be a premise of good governance, and I really appreciate the two Irishmen up here. Happy St. Patrick's Day. You know, I think the more the people get to know what is actually going on behind the scenes, I just think it makes it a better city. I don't think things need to be hidden from the public. I really believe that we're not as stupid as people think we are. And I know there's some people up on the dais that are totally non-corrupt, then there's some others I'm a little worried about. But I just really appreciate the way this city council conducts itself. You seem to be able to disagree in a civil manner. And if you really want to watch a reality show of bad governance, watch the last half an hour of last week's Costa Mesa City Council. It's really, I'm ashamed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Mayor Duffield and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I do hope you will give this some further discussion. I suggested myself some alternative language, and I humbly think that it's probably better than any of the language you're considering here tonight, so I would hope that you would consider that. I personally believe that governments are allowed to spend money preparing ballot measures. It's done all the time. And I think governments can legitimately spend public money analyzing the impact of a measure on a city. I think that's a very legitimate and useful purpose. However, I don't think governments should be campaigning, which includes forcefully educating, in quotes, the public based on their conclusions that they reached, on any measure, whether it's a tax measure or whatever. And so I hope if you feel that this policy is the right thing to do, you would restrain the city from engaging in those so-called educational campaigns on any kind of measure that is on the ballot. Once it's on the ballot, it should be up to the voters, not the government, to decide how the issue should be decided. If the people want to ask the government, the government can respond with its result, but they shouldn't be sending out flyers of any kind on any measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up.
Hello, Joy Brenner. I don't really have a strong position on this. I just have some questions about it. And my biggest question is that as the governing body for our city, you have privy to a lot more information than the rest of us do. And if something came up that you felt was imperative for the public safety in our community, whether it's the seawalls, or the bay, or the pension system, whatever it is, if you thought it was threatening our community, I see it as your responsibility to campaign for what, if it, I mean, not necess, if it requires more taxes, none of us like more taxes, but if it was a matter of public safety and that we needed to be protected, we would need to know why that was absolutely necessary. And I think we would look to you to find out why this was something we needed to spend our money on. So I hate the idea of you handcuffing yourself so that you can't tell we, the general public, why it's absolutely imperative in some supernatural case that we have taxes for an emergency measure, something like that. So I just don't like the idea of it, but I do hope if you're going to vote on it, maybe it does need more discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. I see here, Councilman Hurdman.
So we need to, I'm sorry--
Thank you.
We need to vote. There's no debate on this issue.
No debate. All right, sorry.
Is it continued to the next meeting? Just for point of clarity. Continued to the next meeting? Is that the motion and the second?
Yes.
I didn't mean to continue.
Yes. There's a motion and a second. All right, let's vote.
So to reiterate, a yes vote means you want to continue this, and no vote gives you, goes back to the main motion, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
With Mayor Duffield, Mayor Protem O'Neill, council members Muldoon and Piattar voting no, the motion fails. Three, four.
No vote on the original motion?
Call a question.
Okay, we still have comments on the original motion? Councilwoman Muldoon?
Thank you. What Mayor Protem O'Neill is doing in the large picture is creating a hurdle for the businesses that profit on tax hikes up and down the state with the misuse of public funds, essentially to sell the idea to the public. Something that I think the council policy is great for. If anything, it may not go far enough, because it's, as Mrs. Brenner said, who was also a fine Irish name, there is nothing, it does cuff our hands except that we have the key, which is just to overturn that policy with the majority of the council and to discuss sin yet, and we would like from the dais for the sake of using funds. But in no way will it stop someone from discussing this issue, either in their personal capacities as a council member or as a private citizen. So I'm going to support approving this as is. I actually really appreciate Councilwoman Dixon's changes. I think they're very reasonable, and I will support the original motion as is.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Yes, I think Mayor Protem O'Neill did a very good job of laying it out, and I don't have some of the fears about it, especially after Councilmember Diane Dixon's amendment to it, her original amendment to it. And so I'm in favor of that, as it was amended by Diane Dixon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman.
It's raining out. The weather's poor. Attendance is poor here this evening. I would really be interested in hearing more community input on this particular action before I vote.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other speakers up here?
And just before you vote, would you mind repeating just quickly, so we have it for the record, the changes made to the council's policy, just so we have them, and everyone knows what they're voting on?
Sure, I'll do it real quickly. So in the third line down, the phrase "for" or "against" would be changed to "in favor of." I'm sorry, was it, is that "in favor of"? Okay. And then the first line in the second paragraph that says "public education" would instead be "political consulting."
Thank you.
All right. Let's vote.
With Councilmember Hurdman voting no, the motion carries six, one.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come up.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Rowan Treves. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Rowan Treves, and I'm a local financial educator and a proud OC resident with two sons attending elementary school within Newport Mesa School District. As you may know, next month is Financial Literacy Month, which was recognized in 2004 by Senate Resolution 316 to raise public awareness about the importance of financial education and the serious consequences that may be associated with a lack of understanding about personal finances. This resolution was an effort to highlight the importance of financial literacy and teach Americans how to establish and maintain healthy financial habits. As of today, these principles are still relevant. The reason I'm here today is to share with you about our national campaign for financial literacy, to have 1 million financially educated families by 2020. Every day, 10,000 Americans turn 65, and many of them did not prepare enough for their retirement. The good old days of pensions are disappearing, and government programs such as Social Security are under threat. The cost of housing, living expenses, and health care are close to unaffordable for most. A family of four within an annual income of $84,000 or less now qualifies as low income in Orange County. After two severe recessions in 2001 and 2008, the first decade of the millennium was a lost decade for many families. Although the U.S. economy is recovering, the aftermath continues. It's ironic that we live in one of the wealthiest countries in the world, but we always have money problems. We can work hard all of our lives but retire poor. We do so much to raise our kids, to see them, just to see them finish college with a lot of debt. Nobody teaches us how to manage our money in school. Financial issues are not often discussed, and financial products are not always explained. Most people have trouble reading a financial statement. We use credit cards every day and don't always understand the hidden charges. We buy insurance policies and stick them in a filing cabinet. We contribute to our retirement accounts and hope someone will take care of it. Our organization has helped some of the most underserved communities across North America. We provide free financial classes by experienced and certified instructors. My family has benefited hugely from this financial campaign, and so my wife and I, we are passionate advocates for this particular cause. Most importantly, I would like the city to join us in our campaign and help us in our cause by allowing us to bring these financial workshops to Newport Beach residents in libraries, community centers, and schools, and have these classes posted on the Newport Navigator. In closing, I would like to read a comment from Governor Jerry Brown in support of financial literacy. "Let us all take time to increase our knowledge of our finances and encourage our friends and families to do the same. I encourage Californians to take advantage of the free resources, including seminars and workshops, classroom presentations, online services, and educational materials, and learn how to better manage money, investments, credit, and debt, and avoid financial scams and fraud." Just a couple sentences more, please. "By empowering Californians with the knowledge and tools they need to help them make critical decisions, including financing higher education, buying a home, starting a business, and saving for retirement, we are investing in a brighter and more successful future." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I guess this is no longer an agenda item. So I would like to point out that this is the second time in four or five weeks that people coming to the council meetings and looking at the agenda and listening to what the city clerk said, expected the council to be enacting something in the form listed below. And we got a result from something pulled from the consent calendar, quite different from the form listed below that the people expected to be enacted routinely. And I think that never results in a good result. And I would point out that a policy prohibiting action in favor of a tax measure, tax measure is not necessarily a tax increase. So it's saying that you cannot, you are prohibited from educating the public in favor of a measure that was a tax decrease. But in any event, as you said, it's only a policy, and you can ignore it whenever you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please come up.
This is why I really came here. My side's a Malloy, anyway. So last night, I went to a symposium hosted by Tony Rakakis, who's running for district attorney. And when I got there, there were some people passing out flyers. And the reason I'm here tonight is I am an outspoken opponent of the way my city has handled the sober living situation. I applaud the city of Newport Beach. I believe it was Mayor Curry at the time who really went after this problem and got a grip on it and beefed up your police department because you had prison realignment, while my city dismantled everything and didn't do anything about sober living. And then I find out that, so I get this flyer when I go to this thing last night, and it says Tony Rakakis, I didn't make this flyer up. Tony Rakakis loves sober living homes. He's been protecting his friends for years. And then there's a whole list of campaign contributions that's really interesting. And I think this election, personally, I would like the county of Orange to get a grip on this. But I don't know if you're watching the news, but for instance, the state of Wisconsin, their overdose deaths went up 130%, 138% since January. And guess where they're all headed? They all seem to end up in Orange County. Google sober living, and what comes up? It's going to come up Costa Mesa. So I think this election, I don't think you should vote for anybody who has connections to sober living money in any city in Orange County, for any office in Orange County, your city offices, your county offices, or your state or federal government. I would look right at their 464s, not just for this year, because they know people are watching. Look at the last couple of years and watch that dark, dirty sober living money. There's nothing against recovery. Responsible recovery is fantastic. I'm all for it. In fact, one of the speakers last night, her name is Nancy Clark, she's a Newport Beach resident, she's been doing this for 25 years. Kids aren't dying in her houses. The police aren't coming all the time. They're not bothering the neighbors. She knows what she's doing. But for instance, there's a lot of residents that live in Newport Beach, they particularly happen to be real estate agents, certain villainous real estate agents, anyway, and they own a lot of sober living houses in Costa Mesa. But you guys are getting robbed from our problem. And if anybody liked this map, it might freak you out. Does anybody want a copy of it? Okay. Throw it up on the screen.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments on non-agenda items? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Duffield, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Daniela Currie, and I will be speaking to you about why Newport Beach should have residential curbside organic waste pickup. The first reason is that it will reduce the amount of methane added to the atmosphere. When organic waste, like food scraps, breaks down in an anaerobic environment like a landfill, it produces methane. However, if organic waste breaks down organically, like in a compost facility, it releases carbon dioxide. Methane traps up to 100 times more heat in our atmosphere than carbon dioxide does over a five-year time period. This methane has an effect on many different aspects of our environment, like the ocean, estuaries like our back bay, and our food. Methane helps warm the planet, enhancing sea level rise, which displaces people and destroys our existing coastlines. Think about how important the oceans are to our lives here. By reducing our methane emissions, we will be able to help preserve these important coastlines and the beauty that we have, the privilege to see every day. The second reason is that it will reduce costs. In 2014, Governor Brown signed A B 1594, in which the state law requires local agencies to divert 50% of solid waste away from landfills. In addition, the cost of landfill disposal will be reduced. According to the reports from the EPA, for example, in 2011, Petco Park in San Diego diverted 164 tons of landfill, from the landfill, saving $75,000 starting in 2005. These savings were seen in just a short period of time and can ultimately be used for subsidizing removal fees or costs of a container. Over time, the effects of separating organic waste will help keep our world beautiful. Lastly, the city of Costa Mesa has had curbside organic waste pickup since 2014. They have reported that the program is successful, and many citizens appreciate the steps being taken for the-- the steps being taken for the environment. In an article published in the OC Register in 2016, many citizens stated that yes, it was difficult to adjust to it in the beginning, but quickly became a part of normal life. Just like how Newport Beach had to adapt to recycling trashcan a couple of years ago, the city will adapt to having a third waste container. In summary, I urge you to consider a residential curbside organic waste pickup system for the city of Newport Beach. It will benefit our local environment, save the city money, and would be fairly easily to implement. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very interesting. Are there any other comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. And it's now time for oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Piattar? Mrs. Dixon? Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon?
I have none.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
I have none.
And I have none. So our current business, moving on, the only item we have, I believe, I must leave the room, but there's food back there.
And it's free.
It's free. Good luck.
And just for the record, council, I'm sorry, Mayor Duffield will be accusing himself based on his business interests.
So the Protem steps up. Is there anyone who'd like a staff presentation on this item? Any questions? Okay. Staff, would you mind, well, I guess it would be Mr. Kiff, would you mind presenting the item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll give a brief report. So this item asks the council, it gives the council an update on Assembly Bill 2464 Harper, which relates to amending the Public Resources Code to declare that the port of Newport Beach is eligible in effect to then submit a port master plan to the California Coastal Commission. This bill is carried by Assembly Member Harper. It was introduced in mid-February. So one of the items asks that we would understandably send a letter of support for that bill, as indeed we asked for it. Secondly, making sure this bill progresses requires some advocacy efforts and lobbying efforts. One entity to work with is the California Coastal Commission because they would either oppose or support or remain neutral on the bill. And we had proposed bringing on Don Schmitz to do that. Secondarily, the legislature itself typically needs an advocate on our, sorry, our legislation needs an advocate on our behalf for this bill. Mr. Schmitz works closely with Sean Henchel of Henchel Government Affairs. And after my discussions with him, he believes that he could do this work in about six months at $16,000 a month plus incidentals. So this item asks for that authorization, as well as a budget amendment to cover it.
Okay. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have a lot of questions. And if I understand this correctly, this matter came from our Saturday planning session where we talked about making, including Newport Beach as part of a port master plan and this would be the legislation. I think perhaps the merits of it, the idea has merits. I just think we're, there's just a lot of questions. I think we need, before we commit to spending $160,000 and I just have a lot of questions. I'm not ready to go final on this. That's why I actually proposed a legislative review committee or policy committee so that we would, in some committee structure, vet legislative proposals so we know what is that we're wanting, what's our objective, and how can we accomplish this, and how much does it cost to accomplish this? I just have a lot of questions at this point in time. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman?
Just a quick question. At the state and federal level, is Newport Beach identified officially as a port? Is it labeled a port?
Typically, most maps would call us a harbor.
Yeah.
For the purposes of this, of the Coastal Act, to carve out a port master plan, we think you need to declare yourself or the Coastal Act to declare you as a port.
Okay. I'm just, I'm wondering what might be involved in that and I think it needs to be studied. From a federal perspective, what, how that might affect our harbor becoming a port. So I agree with Councilwoman Dixon as far as needing to study this further.
Mr. Avery?
Did we have, how did we wind up with Schmitz and Associates? Were there any other bidders on this?
Mr. Avery, I did not put this out to bid.
Okay. And that's, yeah, on the face of it, it just seems like I got no sense of how much work it is for the $160,000 bucks. So I don't know, I'd like to get some cold comfort on that. Thank you.
Mr. Piattar?
Yeah, I think it might be appropriate to take a step back and look at some of the extra background. And so, Mr. Kiff, if you can help me fill in the blanks. But for us to do, we like what we did for the land side. We did a local coastal land use plan, which basically took our zoning plan, our zoning code, and got the Coastal Commission to approve it. We had to modify it, go through the process, get it approved. But now, when we approve permits, or at least the land side, as long as it's in conformance with that local land use plan, they don't, our citizens, our residents, don't have to go to the Coastal Commission. It's automatically approved when we approve it from the city's perspective. So this is kind of the waterside version of that. So the Coastal Act has a provision in there called a port plan. And the port plan allows that agency or city to take jurisdiction over that tidlands area, much the same way as a local coastal plan does. So right now, if you wanted to widen your dock two feet because, you know, you bought a bigger boat and you would have to go to the Coastal Commission for that, it would take about 18 months. Or if we wanted to come up with a dredging plan, et cetera, that would, you know, kind of mimic what the Golden Gate Bridge does, you know, you start painting it one end, two years later, you're done, you start over again. Except this would probably be more like 10 years. So we do some sort of a dredging plan that is one of the things that we're going to be discussing this year. Again, you have to go to the Coastal Commission to get an approval on it. And this would, in effect, be part of or be contained in the port plan so you wouldn't have to go for a second approval on it, again, as long as everything complies. But the Coastal Act, Don Schmitz is involved because he's our Coastal Commission consultant and he's already on call or he's doing other work for the city and encroachments on the peninsula and some other things. And so he's worked with Coastal Commission staff. Coastal Commission's executive director has actually gone on record saying that they want to take a lot of the miscellaneous day-to-day permits off their staff's desk so that it makes their job a little easier. But as Don Schmitz worked with Coastal on how do we accomplish that, they basically came to the conclusion that they needed to be able to do a port plan and the Coastal Act says four harbors are allowed to do that, that's it. San Diego, Puerto Guaynimi, Los Angeles, and San Pedro. So if you can see the proposed language on the legislation, it simply adds the port of Newport Beach to that list. And then it allows us to get a port plan, but we still have to go through the approval processes and everything else with Coastal. So all this does is allow the legislation so that we can actually accomplish that. Otherwise, we would end up, let's say we did our own harbor analysis, our own port plan, every single time, for every single event that we needed to go do something in the harbor, we'd have to go to the Coastal Commission for approval. So this allows us to approve it on a harbor-wide or port-wide basis. So it simplifies this, gives a little bit more local control, takes a lot of the miscellaneous day-to-day off the Coastal Commission's desk, allows people who have slips, boats, any work that's being done in the harbor to, in effect, go locally for the permitting instead of going to the Coastal Commission. And if we didn't do it this year, we'd eventually have to do it. And so we were trying to get it in this year and we've actually got the legislation introduced. So if we were successful in the legislature, you know, theoretically, we can start working on the port plan and whenever that's done, we can submit it to the Coastal Commission. So this is unfortunately one of those technicalities to do what we would really like to do, but it requires state legislation for us to do it. And I agree, I would like it if you could do something in this state for a lot less money, but hopefully they won't spend that much. But even if they did, I think in the long run, it saves us a lot of money as a city and as well as time from having to go back to the Coastal Commission for every little permit. So anyway, I don't know, did I kind of cover that right?
I thought that was accurate. Mr. Piattar?
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. I thought I'd wrap up this evening for a couple Irish references and a fun story. Great question, Councilman Hurdman, can Newport be called a port? Well, it was found by a guy named Captain Donald, who I believe is of Irish ancestry. And he reportedly wrote that he found a new port. So I think Newport can be called a port. We'll see if they agree with us in the state. I support this in spirit, Mr. Piattar, and I think it will eventually have the entire support of the council. But I do think perhaps saying this out for competitive RFP for the right consultant is the right way to go with this. So I will make a motion to continue the matter, to send it out to return for consideration with an RFP response created by staff to submit to us for consideration.
I'll second that. Clarifying question, Mr. Muldoon. We could also automatically send it out to an RFP and then bring back to you the results of that, rather than having you review the RFP and then send that out. It would speed it up a little bit, but I want to make sure we're respectful of what you want.
Okay, I'll make amendment to reflect that. Thank you.
Okay. So the staff will send out the RFP? Okay. Thank you.
And another question is, now obviously we're amending the Coastal Act, so it's really important, probably the most important lobbying aspect of this will be with the Coastal Commission. And Don Schmitz has already done a lot of work for the city. Are you concerned about the Sacramento portion of the lobbying or all of it? Because I would really think it would be wise not to change horses as far as Schmitz and Associates.
Are you asking me?
Well, yeah, because I think you need to modify the motion or give further direction to staff that we do the RFP for the legislative part, but perhaps not the Coastal Commission part?
My only concern is just that there's a competitive process. I think that whoever we consider, and I think probably who you propose is probably competent, but I would like to see the competitive process go through. That's my only consideration. I think that the individual we have for Coastal is fine right now. This is for a larger scope.
Would staff do this as an RFQ or an RFP process?
This would be one that'd be a request for qualifications that would first look at qualifications and then talk about price.
Okay. So like you're hiring an architect and engineer?
Correct. Specialized service versus a low bid. We would present to you all the bid numbers, though, for your approval finally of that. All the bid numbers that we knew. Sometimes they may not be disclosed if we ruled somebody out.
My only concern is that the legislative process is proceeding now. We actually...
So rather than asking questions if you have a substitute motion you want to make, that's probably the better way to do it, as opposed to writing questions to the maker of the motion. Just to make your own substitute motion if you have something of a different motion to make. Like you could make a motion to just do part of it and keep Schmitz and Associates.
All right, I'll make a substitute motion that Schmitz stay in the lead and that we do an RFQ for the legislative portion of it. Sacramento, just so that we don't lose time. In fact, frankly, all right, you know, you guys decide what you want to do, but if we delay this, and these guys have kind of on their own dime gone ahead and started on this, but if we delay this, then we risk missing, because the legislative process is full speed ahead right now. It's going to committee, it's doing all these things. And if you delay this for a month or more, I think you jeopardize the success of the legislation. So my substitute, I move the original staff recommendation.
That motion dies for a lot of a second. Let me ask a question in light of what Mr. Piattar was saying. So we currently use Mr. Schmitz for Coastal Commission lobbying. Is that on a case-by-case basis? Or is that on a global contract and we ask him to put in time when needed?
It's my understanding that currently, and I need to look to Simone and Dave, rather than speculate, Simone?
Good evening. We, Community Development Department hires Don Schmitz on a case-by-case basis. So we have, we're trying to transition to more of an on-call with a not-to-exceed just because we feel the need that we need to use more with our Coastal Commission advocacy.
So in other words, we have individual contracts for individual needs as the need arises? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so Mr. Schmitz has been presumably working with the Coastal Commission on this particular item without a contract with the city? Is that correct?
Mayor Protem O'Neill, it's my understanding that Mr. Schmitz is working on this without a contract. That's correct.
Okay. At whose direction? Well, let's ask a different way. From the city manager's direction or anyone on staff's direction?
No, I know that Mr. Piattar had had some discussions with Mr. Schmitz and I was happy to participate, of course. But I knew we also needed to get him under contract because he has done some work without having that.
So I'm trying to understand what the... All right, admittedly, I'm going to admit, I'm a little confused at this point because I'm trying to understand, we've got Mr. Schmitz, I mean, what we've been proposed here is to authorize a professional services agreement with Schmitz and Associates that would include work from Henchel Government Affairs in the amount of $16,000 per month for six months with a not-to-exceed of $120,000. I'm not sure how we would even be able to break this out at this point to try to determine the appropriate amount for Schmitz and Associates versus working with Henchel, given that that's not what's been bid and that's not what we would even be asked to be approving tonight. So I'm trying to understand, even if we wanted to ask Mr. Schmitz to continue to advocate on behalf of a port master plan with legislation, which I don't quite, actually to Mr. Hurdman's points, I'm not entirely clear on what some of the effects would be of going through this path. I'm not sure how to break this out on this. I don't know. I don't know how to break this. I think, I think at the...
Can I try a suggestion?
Yes, please.
What Mr. Schmitz has indeed been doing work for us, to me, he should be compensated for that. That's a, it can be a relatively small amount. I can talk with Mr. Schmitz directly. However, going forward, arguably, we could do maybe a two-week turnaround on a request for proposals for coastal advocacy as well as legislative advocacy and we could invite the proposers to bundle them if they wanted or submit separately. And then we'd be able to return back to you within a month. The question, and I think Mr. Piattar raises a fair one, is that close enough to the bill's first deadline in committee? And it's certainly coming up by that point. But I don't know if there's a better way to do it.
Well, maybe this is a question then for both you, Mr. Kiff and Mr. George. How, are you comfortable with legislation and the direction that it's going to the point where it gets us? Will it get us exactly where we want to go? Because I seem to recall the first time I heard about this, really in concept and principle, was at our planning meeting, which was what, January? And yet I'm reading in this staff report that says in late 2017, council members were working directly with Schmitz and Schmitz to advocate for the port master plan. And so I'm trying to understand now, does it get where council gave you the direction in January? Does it get us exactly where we want to go as council directed in January? Or are there tweaks that we need to be doing to the bill and to the discussions with the coastal commission?
I believe the bill is appropriately written. That doesn't mean, though, that it can't serve as a device to speak with the Coastal Commission further. Bills take multiple amendments in the process. And I think the bones of the bill are there, but further discussions with the Coastal Commission would be valuable to refine that. But I do think it accomplishes what we need to accomplish to later submit a port master plan to the commission.
Okay, Mr. Avery?
Yeah, I know Don Schmitz is very competent at what he does. I just, I would just...
Yeah, I know Don Schmitz is very competent at what he does. I just, I would just, I'm not happy with the process, and I would like to see some other options, just to check ourselves on price. And a tremendous amount of work goes through the Coastal Commission. There's a tremendous amount of expertise in this, so there are plenty of people that could pick up the ball if he wasn't the successful bidder on this. I have complete confidence in that. There's, you know, it's a huge state with a lot of work going on. So, but again, I think Don Schmitz is very good, but I'm just more concerned about the process. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I, maybe this is a motion, kind of a hybrid. Why don't we form an ad hoc committee of council members to, at least, to guide, work with staff on, I mean, I trust everybody's point of view here in the sense that this is a good bill, and this is what we need, but I've done, we've done no analysis of this in the true sense of really, what is our long-term strategic goal here with a harbor port master plan? Again, it all sounds good, but let's kind of do this the right way, and in a process-driven way. So, could we form, in the form of a motion, a two-member council committee working with staff? Maybe, I would also say, Mr. Schmitz has been working with us for years in a successful manner, have him be part of, add-on to his, this contract for him, and the legislative advocacy, we go through the RFQ/RFP process to keep it moving and engage our council members to work with staff. So that's my motion.
I'll second that, and I would like to be on the committee.
May I ask clarification of the motion? Are you, who are you suggesting decide? The members of that ad hoc committee?
I had none, but I'm happy to serve.
So are you, is part of your motion that you and Mr. Piattar would serve on that ad hoc?
Yes. If we want three, that's okay with me, too. Three members.
Your motion. Okay. And with those clarifications, the second. Okay. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. So I would be willing to abandon my motion, support the substitute motion, with the caveat that the motion by Councilwoman Dixon be amended to specifically state that Mr. Schmidt can be involved, as you suggested, but it must be a different firm to be considered out of Sacramento that you partner with for the legislative component.
I'm sorry, did you say it has to be a different firm, or that we will go through the selection process for it?
I'm not answering questions anymore for you, Mr. Piattar.
So may I, was that a substitute motion?
No, I'm requesting, no, I'm saying that I will support her substitute motion. I'm asking her to consider an amendment that would restrict Mr. Schmidt, who's, I'm fine with working with, from working with the individual and their firm that's engaged thus far, to seek a more competitive process.
Support that.
And does the...
That's fine with me, too.
Okay. Let's go out to the public. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mayor Protam O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In a minute, I had some slides I was hoping to show. I don't know if that's going to work or not. First, I'm trying to understand the contract that you are tentatively being asked, because I never know how your motions are going to go. It's a very unusual contract. Apparently, we're planning to pay two people a flat rate of $16,000 a month. There's no clear deliverable of what they have to do for the $16,000 a month. There seems to be no reporting required that they actually spent any time on the contract. Those things bother me. I'm not as comfortable as some of the council members seem to be with the choice of contractor. This is an individual caught up in a number of Coastal Act or Coastal Commission scandals, and currently a trial in San Diego involving something he did. And I would be very leery of relying on him to tell us that the contract that he wants with the city is for a proposal that is actually viable and the thing we want to do. To me, it seems to be a recommendation for a plan that is predicated on a lie. The lie is that Newport Beach is currently, or this council wants it to become, a bustling commercial port along the coast of California. I don't know that any of us want it to be that. And I put up here the slide, which I guess you can see there, that this is legislation that's being proposed. It refers to the port of Newport Beach. The port of Newport Beach does not currently exist. The legislation is very thin. It does not explain who is going to decide what the port of Newport Beach is. I'll show you, and I'll point out the other ports that are mentioned here were port districts before there was a Coastal Act. And to answer one of the questions that the council had here, there is a procedure under the Harbors Navigation Code for creating Newport's, Newport districts. And a port district usually involves more than a harbor. It involves land area around it, where the container ships are going to load, where the oil tankers are going to come in. And that involves petitioning the county board of supervisors, and it involves an election of the people who are become part of the port district. I don't know if that's what we're considering here. And you'll notice the highlighted words here, the port under this chapter does not involve the existing recreation area, which is most of Newport Beach. If we can look at the next slide, that is the following section not being amended by this, if it's possible to go to that. Anyway, it emphasizes that the ports are commercial ports that it's talking about. And to the question here, Caltrans recognizes the existing port districts in California. Obviously, Newport is not one of those yet, and I could find nothing that recognized us as a port. And so I think this whole idea, its practicality, and whether this is something we want to do, needs to be better understood. So I think you need at least a second opinion from somebody other than Mr. Schmitz, that this is a solution to the problem that he is stating it will solve. Thank you. Sorry, the slides didn't work. I was going to show you the poster, which is in my written comments from 1919. We promoted a bond bill in the county of Orange back then to promote Newport Beach as a commercial port. Didn't work out then. I don't think it's going to work out now, but this time, I don't think we actually want it. And yet, we're advocating legislation to become one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So in 2014, there was a really great meeting over here at the library, and on the panel was a DEA, the head of the DEA for California, the head of the Port Authority in Long Beach, Homeland Security, Customs, and I think at the time, it was Police Chief Johnson. And the whole issue was how the drugs are flowing into Newport. So, I know, not to keep hashing on this subject, but the guy who was the head of the DEA now in Southern California, used to be head of the DEA in the late 70s in Miami Beach. And he said that this whole area is turning into Miami Vice, and that watch out, because in the next few years, the overdevelopment in your port. I mean, he was almost like a psychic or something. And he said, forget about the wall at the border. The drugs are coming in, small boats are coming up, and then they unload the, all the drugs onto, like, yachts and things, and they come right into Newport Harbor. And they like coming into Newport Harbor better than going into San Diego or Long Beach, because the customs situation is completely different here. So the reason I'm talking about this is because when you are designated as a port, does that change some kind of customs? Oh, and also the Coast Guard was there, because they're apprehending all this, what's going on out in the ocean before it gets into the harbor. And I was wondering if becoming a port changes some kind of security issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Evening, council members. My name's Luke Drew. A little bit disturbed at what I heard tonight here. There's been several meetings where public concern over transparency has been brought up. And what I heard tonight was, is that we have a contractor doing contract work without a contract. We have meetings with the contractor, with selected members of the council and the city manager. And now we're proposing to pay for this work that the council didn't know about. And we had meetings last year, this is what I heard, that we had meetings last year regarding this subject, but it didn't come up to council until January. That's my concern. And also, I totally agree with Jim on, making Newport Harbor a port implies commercial. And I don't think Newport Harbor is set up for commercial the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, let's bring it back to council. Are there any, did you want to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. It's so disheartening to hear misstatements about this becoming a commercial port. I've never even heard that comment in my entire time serving on council. I've never heard a single one of my colleagues suggest that, have that desire. As a matter of fact, I could say that everyone here probably would fight against that. And it's really reposterous to make that conclusion. I actually find it offensive. It's not for containers. This is simply about local control. This is so the yacht clubs and the people who are active in the harbor, and the city council who cares about dredging, and those who are concerned about the environment, have a say in our local port plan. It's that simple. And to make it some sort of commercial proposal is just totally taken out of context, and it really is a disservice to those who care about the water and want to have low control of the harbor that they love so much. This is a recreational harbor here in Newport Beach, and it will always be that way.
So, Mr. Harp, maybe, would you mind helping us out a little bit and restating what the motion on the table is?
It may take three or four of us to do it. Let's try.
Okay. Correct me if I'm incorrect, to form a council ad hoc committee consisting of council members Dixon and Piattar to work with staff on this issue and allow Mr. Schmitz to be involved, but there must be a different firm to work on the legislative component? Yes.
Let's vote.
I have a point of clarification. Are you saying it has to be different than this Sean Henchel guy versus the Sean Doherty or some of the other guys that were working on it before?
I would just like to see more competition in this. I don't like the notion that it's set up already.
You're not prohibiting him, you just want a...
Hang on, I'm sorry.
Don's just trying to clarify the motion.
I understand, Mr. Piattar, but Mr. Muldoon finish.
So, for the sake of competition, for the sake of, we have a pre-existing relationship with Mr. Schmidt that makes sense, and he is basically working with us on a continual basis. I have no problem with continuing to work with him, but I would like to see some competition in this. And these prices that were submitted originally are way too high, so I'm not interested in working with that firm.
So maybe to Mr. Piattar's point of clarification, the second, the latter point is to send it out for an RFP on the legislative portion of it. And if the Henchel group wanted to bid, they could. Is that, I just want to make sure I understand the clarification. No. Okay. So the clarification is that we would send it out for RFP, but the Henchel group would not be permitted to be part of that RFQ? I guess it's RFQ, I'm sorry. RFQ. Is that the maker of the motion understood? Second understands. Mr. Piattar?
I can't accept it, because I think he will be germane in the success of the legislation. So I'd like to at least let him have a shot at it and not be considered ineligible for it.
Okay. So will a, then is there a second to the motion?
I'll, he can have a shot at it. It's not worth...
Then second's okay.
Okay. So I just want to clarify what's on the, I'm going to clarify for just a moment. So all points made are still correct, except the last one, which is that the legislative portion of it would go to an RFQ with no prohibitions of bidders. Mr. Kiff?
That's as I understand it, is that Ms. Dixon's motion? Okay. It sounded like that's the second, too.
All right, let's vote.
With Mayor Protam O'Neill voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
Okay. We'll invite the mayor back in. Just as a point of clarification, was Mr. Hurdman's name an abstention, or did it register a vote?
Registered an aye. Was that incorrect?
Okay.
Okay.
Just checking, thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.